Lovely. So I'm going to click on continue. I guess I'll click on continue. Okay. This is the July 2021 regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice. This meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Urban Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board's reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule on the board of the board's regular meetings was sent to and published in the Esberry Park Press, and was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. Tonight's meeting was listed in the notice of the schedule of the regular meetings. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall, and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. In addition, a copy of the notice is and has been available to the public, and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because we may end up having two meetings in July, we'll just indicate for the record that this is the July 8, 2021 meeting of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remy. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their expert in the audience, about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity, and its limited authority is specifically set forth in Borough Ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It is quasi-judicial in nature, and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations. The Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough of Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the borough's land use laws or the denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance, and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any attachment to the zone plan. Variances relate to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call, please. Sandy.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Here.
Mrs. Quigley.
Here.
Mr. Ridgway.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Ludman.
Here.
Dr. Lauffer.
Here.
Mr. Consella.
Here.
Mr. Shiovetty.
Here.
Mr. Leader.
Here. Please join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a number of matters on the agenda this evening, which I will address in a minute. Before I do that, I just want to take a moment to recognize the passing of a really tremendous resident of Fairhaven that served on Fairhaven's land use boards for decades, Jim Engel. He passed over the weekend. I had the privilege of serving with Jim for many years and working alongside of him. It was people like Jim that create the Fairhaven that we all love and enjoy today. And it is in the spirit of Jim and those like Jim that work so hard to preserve this community for what it is that we all serve today. And I do just want to, before we get to anything else that's significantly less important, just recognize that we've lost somebody very important to our community. That being said, we have two matters of all business, the Mackelduff matter and the McQ matter. We also have new business. We have Borough Engineer is going to provide us with an update on the stormwater rules, and we have the Katy matter. Lots of moving parts. It's my understanding that the Mackelduff matter, we've received multiple communications from council. And I'm going to ask whether or not council for, I think, McKelduff, I'm sorry, I think I'm mispronouncing it. If council for McKelduff is in the audience, I would ask you to please raise your hand. I don't have that open. I do not see council in the audience. So it's my assumption that the request that they go second is the one that is the most current directive. And therefore, we will proceed with the McQ matter. Rich, I don't... Let's do the stormwater rules. It's just, that's kind of administrative, so let's just get to that. Let me just set the scene first of all, and I don't want to take too much time with this, but I do want to cover it. And I thank you for, Rich, for looking at it and being ready to talk to us about it. So the board will remember that in, over the last few months, a few questions have come up with regard to properties being within the riparian buffer zone. It's been identified in our review that those properties were there, and there's been some question as to exactly what the ordinances require of the board. And a query was presented to Rich, and Rich is here tonight to give us a general overview of how that works. So, Rich, if you could give us sort of a quick summary, and then we'll see whether or not the board has any quick questions before we move on to the applications tonight.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So I went back. I did watch a couple of your Zoom meetings from the past few months, so I do have a pretty good understanding of what your concerns are. So I just want to take about 10 minutes. I'll go through very quickly how some of this relates to Fairhaven and some of these projects that are coming before you. So the one thing we want to talk about in particular is the term riparian buffer, or also known as riparian zone. We have an ordinance. I believe it's Section 30-13. And that is basically the model ordinance of NJDEP. So years ago, it's my understanding, as with the stormwater rules and some of these other regulations, that the local municipalities had to adopt at the local level that ordinance. So what we do as engineers for the borough, when projects come before us or come before you with certain conditions, and then we go through resolution compliance, et cetera, the riparian zone is one thing that we're looking at. From like 10,000 feet, riparian zones fall under the Flood Hazard Area Control Act. That's as per DEP. What I'm going to do is share my screen. I'm going to pull up the webpage from DEP's, the Division of Land Use Regulation. And as you can see, under the section Streams and Rivers, it talks about types of permit authorizations. This is for flood hazard area permit authorizations. Many of the projects that we see from an administrative standpoint fall under what's called this permit by rule. Some of you may have heard of that term. Basically, there's 63, I believe, permits by rule that DEP has. And it's more of an administrative function by the applicant. There's no prior written approval. There's no submission to DEP. There's no submission of plans, applications, noticing your neighbors, things of that nature. It basically spells out, permit by rule, what you can do. So for example, if I go to the flood hazard area, and this is the actual act, this is 7:13. If I scroll down to... I thought I had this ready, sorry. As an example, permit by rule number 12, construction of an addition to a lawfully existing habitable building. So if a homeowner comes in, they fall within a riparian zone, and they want to do a small addition off the back of their house, they need to show us, meaning the engineering department, how they meet this criteria. So it spells it out. In this particular case, there's seven items. The one thing that you might see that stands out is the footprint of the existing building does not increase by more than 400 square feet. All right, so if they're proposing a larger addition, then you go to what's called general permit by certification. That is like the next tier of permit per DEP. So if you fall within a riparian zone, and you want to do up to a 750-square-foot addition, there's an online portal. The applicant, or homeowner, or their professional or engineer would submit through this portal and give a description of what they're doing. And then we get that documentation at our office at the borough. And, you know, it basically goes down the line. You can see general permits, individual permits, but many of them are permit by rule. So we go back to this. This is the one for an addition. Number 13 is a non-habitable building, so if they wanted to put a shed in. The next one is number 14, which is an open structure. That would be like a covered patio. And so on. A deck. Number 20 is a fence. They want to put a fence if they're in the riparian zone. They could put a fence in as long as they're not clearing, cutting, or removing, you know, trees within that riparian zone, you know, not disturbing, you know, within 25 feet of the top of bank. So this is all spelled out. We are looking at these on a case-by-case matter, and that's the key. Each project is different than the other. So when they submit for their final zoning, they need to depict all this stuff on a plan. They have to document how they're meeting the rules per DEP. And in some or many cases, they have to go beyond this. They may have to apply to DEP. And then those applications go in pending, you know, bin, per se. And we work with the applicant and their engineers, and we ensure that those permits are secured. So having said that, that's basically what it is in a nutshell. Everything falls under the Flood Hazard Area Control Act, riparian zones. As you know, it's 300 feet within a C1 waterway and all of its tributaries. So that's how we handle it, meaning Joe Mulay, who's on here tonight, Nick Porczynski, who works with me, and myself, obviously. So with that, if anybody has any questions on any of the logistics or any other things that may have come up, I'd rather not talk specific about because I think you guys handled it okay with putting a condition in that they meet conditions of the riparian zone or buffer ordinance.
Yeah, for us, Rich. Go ahead, Al.
Yeah. Why do we have a separate ordinance if this is all covered under the DEP's state laws?
It's very, it's no different than the stormwater rules. You know, the stormwater rules are per DEP.
Why does our ordinance have a section for variances if there's no need for a variance? It can be done by a permit. Giving someone a permit based on a state law as opposed to someone having to have a variance for a local ordinance that we have in place.
Well, I think, all right, so the wording of our ordinance, and I think you're referring to, there's a section in there that gives the zoning board some type of power to grant a variance. Todd and I did speak briefly about that yesterday. Honestly, I'm not sure why it spells out zoning board having that power, but it could be, as an example, if they want to do a swimming pool and say, part of the property is in a riparian zone, but they can locate the pool outside the riparian zone, that may trigger a variance. But it would be like, if they wanted to put it in the backyard and they're on the river, but then the front yard's not in the riparian zone, I don't, in the best interest, I don't think we would want swimming pools in the front yard. So I think as a borough, we need to re-review that ordinance, and I think that's one positive that we took out of all this, that there are some insistencies in that local ordinance, and we need to go back and review that and figure out what was the intent of that section, honestly.
Well, that section is part of the DEP's model ordinance, the minimum standards for the model ordinances for municipalities. So it seems like that's something that they require to be in there. So I'm not sure if we've got an ordinance and we've got a section on variances, despite the fact that they're getting a permit for a state law, we have a separate ordinance for the borough, and within that ordinance, a specific section on variances for that ordinance. How do we technically and legally just skip that?
Well, I think, and Al, I think that's exactly right. You have the point. It's just, it may not be fair to kind of address it to Rich, because Rich is giving us the engineering perspective. And it might be the kind of thing that we also have to circle in Borough Council on. Because, Rich, Al's point is that you would think normally either the DEP has jurisdiction over an issue or we do. And if the DEP does, they preempt the field. And we would condition any of our approvals on the applicant getting DEP approval if they have jurisdiction. But the problem is, the ordinance doesn't seem to stack or defer to the DEP. It seems to have a wholly separate, an entirely separate set of standards. Because you don't, I don't recall seeing anything in there that says, except if you can get a permit by rule. It essentially precludes much of the development except where the board grants a variance, and the standards for giving the variance are very, very stringent, if you look at the language. So that's why the board was struggling with it. Do we have jurisdiction? Does the DEP have jurisdiction? If you get a permit by rule, why are we still looking at these, what would seem to be superior standards to try and grant a variance? And so that, and Al, not to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what we're struggling with the last couple of times we looked at this ordinance. And it may be an issue directed not only to Rich and his engineering expertise, but also Borough Council.
I mean, if we have a property that comes before us and they have, they're on a county road, and the county grants them permission to put in two curb cuts for their driveway, and that application comes before zoning officer or the zoning board, we don't automatically grant relief for two curb cuts for a driveway just because the county did. So I'm confused why we're not, why we're considering these closed if there's permit by rule on a state law with DEP that may be substantially similar to the Borough Ordinance. The Borough Ordinance doesn't have these permits by rule. The Borough Ordinance has very specific criteria for variances, very specific definitions for all of these activities.
I think what's happening, and this is, in this case, other regulations within the state. And I'm not afraid to say this publicly, that in Trenton, they're pushing for the onus down to the local level. So you've got these regulations, and DEP doesn't have, you know, a cast of thousands in Trenton reviewing applications anymore. So it's up to the applicant to, number one, identify whether or not they're in a riparian zone, map it on a survey. We also work with them to assist them, where maybe in years past, they worked with the DEP on some of this. And they brought up 63 permits by rule. So they are regulated activities by DEP, but there's a set of conditions they have to meet. And you, as you mentioned, we have a local ordinance model of the DEP ordinance for a riparian zone. And in fact, in our case, we're calling it a riparian buffer, even though it's the same thing. It does get a little confusing. So I think, as Mr. Irene had mentioned, we need to go back with our council, take that ordinance. And I said a few moments ago, I think this exercise has opened that discussion up. And listening to you folks at your prior meetings and understanding the confusion, you know, we weren't aware of that. We weren't aware of that confusion, but we do know, we are monitoring the properties. We are ensuring that the applicants are getting their their proper documentation to prove to us that they meet, you know, those conditions of the various permits by rule, or if they needed to go beyond that, prior to issuance of building permits.
Yeah. Applications that brought this to the top, we had asked if the property or the disturbances on the property were within 300-foot riparian zone or buffer, whatever it happened to be called, in whatever section there. And we didn't get an answer, and we asked for that from the zoning office, I believe, also. And I don't know that we have an answer still to that, so I'm not sure how they could have a permit by rule if we don't know
Well, in that
within the zone or not.
And not to talk about specific applications that became, you know, came before your board, but in that case, you guys made that condition of the resolution the day that applicant's professional called our office working through that. Nothing to date has been submitted, it's my understanding, but we are continuing that dialogue with them. So and that's no different than any of the other applications that come in, even for administrative approval that don't go before a board.
So this is the way, this is the way I understand it. This is New Jersey, so there's like 40 or 50 different agencies that have jurisdiction over various developments all across the state. And whenever this board grants approval based on our local ordinances, it's always subject to whoever might have concurrent jurisdiction for whatever reason. And so as a result of the process, and people wanting to spend their money in different ways, sometimes people will go to the DEP and get their approvals for CAFRA, you know, before they'll come in and get a local approval. Other times, they'll go get the local, and then they'll get the CAFRA or some other DEP permit later on, and so on and so on. The process with regard to DEP and other related approvals is pretty well-established. And so all of our resolutions always condition any approval that we give on those other approvals being collected. What we've asked specifically of Rich, and what I think he's explained tonight, is, you know, how does this work as a practical matter? And what I'm understanding, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, our model ordinance was given to us by the state. The model ordinance tracks the DEP regulations with regard to when permits are issued, what needs to be submitted, and follows that criteria. And the process inside of the building department involves making sure that all of that is taken care of prior to issuance of a building or a zoning permit. With that being the understanding, query as to whether or not, if the DEP were to deny a permit within one of these zones, whether or not it would matter at all, what the zoning board had to say about it. And I would suggest to you, the answer is no. Nothing that we could do that would usurp their jurisdiction to say no. Now, in the other direction, I guess what's possible is that if the DEP approved it, that it would still have to come before the zoning board, and the zoning board would still have to say yea or nay, and we would have the opportunity to be more stringent. Suffice it to say, that's not the way it's working right now. That's not Rich's understanding of the way that the ordinance is put together and its purpose. And I think that we can continue to engage the council in a discussion about what they want. But it's their ordinance, and as a practical matter, I think that the answer to the question is that it's here because the state made us do it, and that it runs parallel to the DEP regs, and that the language about a variance is something that historically has not been utilized in terms of the board giving variances over the same issue.
So Todd, are you saying that we should be considering in these applications that particular ordinance and trying to determine whether the property's in a riparian buffer and what that means?
Not at all. I'm saying the opposite. That it's actually, that it's actually not something that we're supposed to be looking at. That it's put there because it's supposed to be there, and that our building department and zoning department needs to make sure that they comply with it as an outside permit. And that we can't grant a variance within the jurisdiction of the DEP. And so it's illogical to me to think that the DEP would want us to have concurrent jurisdiction. Unless what they mean to say is, unless the zoning board says that even though we give a permit, they don't want to. And if that's the case, I don't think that's the way it's been working. And they're not ordinances. They're council's ordinances. And so it wouldn't be for us to decide. It would be for us to raise to the council that the ordinance may be unclear, and they may want to look at it. If it means that we do get some other ability to review it, not entirely sure that the council would even want that. But I think if we present it to them, we, you know, throw the ball into their court and see if they want to do something or clarify.
Todd, just making sure I'm getting it here, and thanks, Rich, for the overview here. But said another way, if we're dealing with a property in a riparian buffer zone, we can assume that the zoning officer looked at these issues and determined if a variance was required. And if we, if there's nothing raised before us, we don't have to consider these issues for these properties, right? I mean, we could just continue to put the language in our resolution saying they must conform with these requirements. Is that fair?
Yeah, so I mentioned the sequence before, because I don't know what sequence it happens. I've never seen the riparian issue be flagged in a knockdown letter in all the time I've been reviewing knockdown letters. So just as a practical matter, I don't think it goes in there. If for some reason they didn't qualify, and it were reviewed in advance of coming to the zoning board, I assume that would be a discussion between the zoning officer and the applicant as to whether or not they would be able to get a permit by rule or by certification, for example. If it doesn't happen until after us, and that permit is unavailable to them for whatever reason, then our permit is of no use to them. They can't do it until they collect them all.
You would expect that to preclude coming before the zoning officer, though.
No.
I would expect it anyway.
I mean, I guess you can logically assume that, but, you know, in terms of, I'm thinking more broadly than just Fairhaven. You know, we review mainly residential applications. But, you know, in the broader scheme of things, you know, you take things in different sequence. You usually go where you think you have the greatest likelihood of being denied, because you'd like to get through that tough thing before you spend the money on the other stuff. So I don't know. I don't know. And I don't know historically, you know, whether or not this has been hit every time, or whether or not it's dealt with the same way every time. But
But to the extent the ordinance does grant the zoning board some authority to grant variances in certain situations, if the applicant didn't request it, we didn't grant it, then presumably it gets caught on the back end, because all our resolutions say, "And in all relief, not expressly granted by the board herein is denied." So if there is a riparian issue in play, and the applicant didn't request relief, and we didn't grant relief, then presumably it's going to get caught on the back end anyway. I would think.
Would we have jurisdiction if it's not raised as an issue by the zoning?
Adam, I don't understand, quite frankly, the jurisdictional issue to begin with. If it's a DEP matter, it should be a DEP matter. If it's something, I understand what the DEP wanted the municipalities to do with the stormwater regs, but to have parallel requirements and restrictions that don't match one another for the DEP to cram it down into the municipal ordinance. And when we look at this ordinance, presuming it was mandated by the DEP, and then we look at the regs, many of which Rich just showed us, why don't they match one another?
Yeah.
So look, so we've got three applications on tonight. I want to stay in our lane. And I think our lane is to flag it, identify, ask the question, get the answer. If the board would like to inquire further of council, then I would suggest that we have Mr. Irene prepare a short note to Borough Council raising the issue and asking specifically with regard to the language if he could help us understand better, you know, from a legal perspective, you know, whether or not there's something here. Remember, just because it isn't identified in a knockdown letter doesn't mean that there isn't a variance. We pick them up all the time. And so, you know, not all the time, but sometimes. And when mistakes are made, you know, we address it. So if we were to find out that this has been misinterpreted for all these years, Mike's correct. We've done the best we can do, and moving forward, there'll have to be a decision made. But I would suggest to you that if the But I would suggest to you that if the council thought. That there was going to be a separate variance created and they didn't realize that. They might rethink the entire issue and in the end it's up to them. You know, what, what those things really are for us to look at. I know Al's answer, but is everybody interested in having Mike write a note to Borough Council to look at this a little bit more closely? So that we can make sure that the ordinances are being, we understand them properly and that there isn't the need for this to be revisited by councils that it's right?
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right. Michael, we could talk about that offline if you'd like, but it's pretty straightforward. Send them the ordinance, raise the issue, make, you let them know that Rich was here and. Provided us with a summary and, and that we have further questions as to interpretation.
Very good, Ms. Chairman.
Thanks very much for the turn, Irene. Okay, we're going to proceed with the McQ matter. If you hear on the McQ matter, please use the raise your hand feature. And we will bring you forward, any, both the applicant or architect and any other experts that may be here with the applicant.
And Mr. Chairman, my notes for the record reflect that this matter was commenced at the June three, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the board. It was continued to tonight's meeting without the necessity of renotice. I do not believe Ms. Gable was present at the last meeting, so we're going to swear in as our professional, our professional planner. Elena, if you'd raise your right hand, there you are. You do swear in testimony to give the board of your truth, all truth and not the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Record reflects she's been sworn. And do we have? Mr. Cronin and Mr. McQ?
They're coming in now.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Cronin, you're on mute. Mr. McQ, we've got your audio. We can't hear you, but you'll be on mute. There we go.
Well, I know.
Good evening. I know we swore in last time, but I'm just going to, out of an abundance of caution, swear in again. If you'd each raise your right hand, you do swear in testimony to give the board of your truth, all truth and not the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Cronin, if you just give us your full name, spell your last year address for the record, please. Mr. Cronin?
Matthew T. Cronin, C R O N I N.
And your address?
One twenty-nine Shrewsbury Avenue, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. McQ, if you do the same, please.
Michael McQ, Levin Williams Street, Fairhaven.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Cronin, I, I believe there was revised, a one sheet revised architectural plan submitted, you prepared it. What, is it dated? Is there a date on that plan?
It is not dated and embarrassingly, I wasn't aware we were submitting it until I got.
Okay, do you, do you not want to mark that?
Ms. Gable's review letter. I've got, uh, two exhibits, I've, I've got two sheets of, of an exhibit here, the completed version of that sketch and then a plot plan.
All right, so do you not? So do you not want to mark what was submitted?
Sure, but we might as well, yes.
Okay.
Please, I'm sorry.
It's, it's one sheet and it's undated, correct?
Correct.
And Sandy, maybe you can help me out. I'm just trying to check what exhibit number we're up to here. Is it A dash three? Mr. Cronin, do you have it? The list?
I do not know.
Okay. I get, I get exhibit A dash three, so we're going to mark the revised architectural plan prepared by Matthew T. Cronin, AIA, one sheet, undated, A dash three. Okay. Was there something else you wanted to mark, Mr. Cronin?
Yes, um. I've got, uh, two sheets of, uh, uh. The next. Generation of, of that sketch, I've got them, I can screen share them and I can email them to whoever's supposed to get them. Uh, there are S K one and S K two sheets and dated today.
Mr. Cronin, can you please clarify? Because I know that we had our planner do a review of what was submitted to us. The other two sheets that you have, are, are there differences or are they just further details consistent with what was submitted?
The first sheet is a cleaned up version of the sheet you already have with a little bit more information on it. The second sheet is a plot plan with the calculations to show you where we land. On the lot and where we are with the variances in, in this proposed layout.
So, so Elena, I'd like to ask you, since you went through the effort of reviewing what was submitted. That you please just pay close attention to what's being presented with regard to those other two exhibits. And please track and identify for the board if you see anything that's a variance with what you, what you analyzed.
First thing, that was one of the comments in my updated review letter as well was to provide testimony about what the, what's changed and what the new variances are. Because that wasn't submitted as part of the. Last revision we received.
Right, can I just? The miss, I guess. Our understanding on our part was. We were under the impression from the last meeting to just draw up some sketches, nothing official. And out of courtesy, we shared it with the secretary, the new plan, and it was just very. You know, with the understanding that the next meeting. It would be more formal plans and. That was shared. Obviously with Ms. Gable. We weren't. Not sure why that was professionally reviewed when it was. You could tell it's basically, uh. It was such a. Kind of unofficial. Drawing. But here we are. With it being reviewed and I don't think it was pretty much. Didn't look like much change, right, Ms. Gable?
There were some changes, which I tried to outline as many as I could determine in my report, but. There was some information emitting like the book chart showing the, and also the revised location of the building on the lot. So I didn't get a chance to determine what the revised variances were based upon those materials.
Mr. McQ, you may have heard my we can't win speech before we went public. But quite literally, we can't win. You know, we saw you thirty days ago and we're trying to move quickly. And what we really need is the information. Be circulated so that we can all look at it and think about it in advance of tonight. So Ms. Gable graciously jumped right on it, thinking that that was exactly what she needed to do. In fact, I affirm that that's what I wanted her to do. I assure you that it is in the interest of moving things along that we processed it quickly or more quickly than you expected.
Great, then, you know, happy we shared it and got it out there. And you can win, apparently you guys just got off of a big win, so congrats on that. But anyway, back to the topic. Matt, do you want to share?
Yes. Sure. Okay. Um, this is the, the cleaned up version of the, the sheet that was submitted. It's, uh. Nothing much has changed. The, I cleaned up the front of the second floor plan. And I've drawn a, a red outline of where the prior submission was versus where the, the, uh, the current. Proposal is, we are. Basically sliding the, the building back, we're sliding the front. Wall back about a foot, we're. Bringing the second floor flushed with the first floor in the front, very much what Ms. Gable said in her, in her letter. We are creating a small. Entry porch within the footprint of the house on the, on the north side there and then we are extending. The, the first floor of the house a foot further than we had, which actually nets us five less square feet. And we're also adding the, the front porch was very important to the McQ's and we took the, uh. We took the board's words, um, excuse me, as a, of, of the, um, the. The possible conflict between the porch and the parking. So we reduced the width of the parking and then we split the, the front stairs from the porch because there were some comments that. A five foot porch with stairs on it really isn't a usable porch, so we've. Created a, a front porch that's thirteen by fifteen, two feet in from the south side of the house, which allows us about ten feet in our. A, a non-approved parking space. Door from the living room out there, which gets the McQ's space for a couple of seats. To sit out on a covered front porch. It also gets them the, the shade from, from the western sun that, that was brought up at the last meeting. The first floor pretty much stays intact. We lose a small. Coat room in the front, the coat closet rather, to create the five by five porch, but we get a somewhat larger. Closet in the back behind the, back by the backs porch and stairs. That layout really hasn't changed much. The second floor. Slides back a total of three feet, but we are now. Only cannely bring out a foot off the back of the building. The front elevation, as you can see, we changed some of the front windows on the second floor and the first floor to make it work better with this kind of asymmetrical porch. I think it works kind of nicely. And then if you go down to the second sheet, which I will, like I said, I will email this out. We've got the, the plot plan. Which we are, which shows. Excuse me. Let's go down to the, the zoning requirements. We're. At a five point eight foot front yard setback where we were at a four point eight foot last time, so we're sliding. The front wall of the house and the back a foot from where we were proposing. And then we're at a, the rear yard setback, we were proposing eight, we're now proposing six point five where five exists to the existing steps. The side yard setbacks don't change. I had erroneously called the south side. Eight feet where it's really seven feet to the cantilever. So we're at two foot to the north, nine feet to the south for a total of nine. They're both pre-existing, they're both non-conformities. Our lot coverage goes up by a percent and a half because we're no longer. Layering our front porch with our, our second floor cantilever. And then our, our building coverage, the same thing kind of happens there. We also took into account the, the discussions about the height of the building. On top of sliding the entire mass of the building back, the second floor actually back about three feet. We reduced the height of the building by ten inches and I went back and looked at the, at the William Street drawings. And there are two height dimensions on the, the approved William Street drawings. One is. From the top of the block to the ridge, which is the twenty-three foot four that was mentioned at the last meeting. The actual height per ordinance for nine. Is twenty-five foot nine. Our, the proposal, our proposal for eleven William is twenty-three foot six top of block to ridge, only two feet. More than the, the, the neighboring building and we're twenty-seven foot two. Measured per ordinance where we were at twenty-eight feet measured per ordinance last time. We achieved this by setting the rafters down onto the wall plate instead of setting them on the, the ceiling joist. And reducing the slope slightly just to get a little bit of the height out of it. Our F A R. Our floor area. But the, the maximum F A R is, uh, is, well, our F A R does not change, I apologize. And our habitable floor area is, is somewhat larger, but it's the, it's the basement that we're calling.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Cronin, I, I gotta stop you. I mean, I feel like you just fit an hour and a half in about four minutes. I can't see it, it's too small and it's all so important. Can we start with this? Can you blow up your screen so we can look at the zoning table?
And while we're doing that, Mr. Cronin, I don't want to forget to mark the exhibits, so we have yet the latest revised architectural plan, one sheet. What is the date on that, sir?
It's today, seven, eight, twenty-one.
Seven, eight, twenty-one, and then you have the revised, and that'll be A four, you have the revised plot plan, also one sheet. Is that dated today as well, seven, eight, twenty-one?
Yes.
That'll be A dash five, thank you.
How about the upper left of the toolbar? Now, to the right of that. Just to the right of that.
I see, okay, yes. Okay, um.
One more time, please. So I, look, it's super important that the board understand where you've made changes. I looked at the drawing that was submitted and it was not apparent to me whatsoever how you had changed this, but. In that synopsis, I think it appears as though you've changed it materially. What I'd like you to do is I'd like you to run through the variances that are triggered by the application. And then I'd like you to give the board the original proposal in terms of the number and what the new number is. Let's get our head around what these figures are and then let's go back to your drawings and then you can show us. You know, where this sits inside of the original proposal.
All right, thank you. The first three variances, a lot area, frontage and depth do not change. Um, we go to the front yard setback, twenty-five feet is allowed, nine point eight feet is existing. The prior submission was four point eight feet to the edge of the porch. And we are currently proposing five point eight feet. We are a foot, the front of our porch and stairs are a foot further from the property line in the street. Than the prior submission.
So the original, the original plan projected five feet from the existing structure. The new plan projects four feet from the existing structure, so the porch size has been pulled back by one foot, is that correct?
We have pulled back the front wall of the house by a foot to keep a five foot porch.
Okay, so the whole thing moved back one.
We have moved. Yes.
Mr. Cronin, will that line up parallel with nine William Street now or, or in line with nine William Street front steps? I think in our last meeting, we, I, I think you, you indicated that you were a foot proud of that front setback. Are we now in line with nine William?
I'll say it'll be close. I'm not sure exactly what the final build out on that was, but. Yes, if we were a foot further, yes, we will be. In line with it. Our end step will be in line with their furthest part of their steps.
Got it.
Mr. Nishaz, let me make sure I understand. Nine Williams has a flat facade with steps coming off forward, right? And so, and so what we would have here is something very close to an alignment of the stairs. But with a projection of a porch within that entire stairway, so a lot more bulk, not equal, are they?
Agreed, I'm just talking about the plane and not, not the bulk.
Just wanted to make sure I'm following, okay?
Mr. Cronin, we, we had talked about our concern about having, moving this house closer to the street. We, we had nine point eight feet existing and proposed was four point eight feet and now you say that it's going to be five point eight feet. We had also mentioned that, would you consider embedding? Some of that front porch into the, uh, into that great room. And I think you said that that was a possibility or that was an option. How can we do this without moving the building further to the, to the street than it already is?
Mr. Lauffer, uh. We are, we are, I will, you will see in, in, in the floor plan, we're carving out a five by five entry porch. Out of the front of the house. So that the stairs. The top, the porch, the front of our front porch is at, our entry porch is actually a foot. Further in than the existing front of the house. We are, we are still proposing a five foot, one story covered porch. Next to it, so that the McQ's have a place to sit and interact with, with the life on the street. I'll be able to get into that a little more when we get to the next sheet, if I may?
Well, we can just. Emphasize that the house, the front of the structure of the building. Is actually moving a foot. Further from the street, so it will, the foundation will be actually set back a foot. From nine William Street, so nine William Streets still. Will be closer to the street, we're pushing our house further away. Make that clear.
So, so Mr. Cronin, I know it's hard because I keep pestering you with interruptions, but I'd like to get through the zoning table and make sure that we all understand what the math looks like, please.
Okay, so our rear yard setback, thirty feet is required. The existing is five feet to the bottom step of the masonry stairs extending straight out from the back of the house. The prior submission was eight feet to the side of our porch coming down the side of the house. We have moved the bulk of the house back. We have moved the bulk of the house back. And our setback to our the furthest point of our rear step. Is six point five feet where the five exists and eight was the prior application. So we're a little closer to the rear, but that was pretty much the conversation last month. That sliding, moving the house, moving the bulk of the house back would would be. A a good idea, basically, it sounded like. Um, then getting into the side yard setbacks. We are, we really haven't messed with them since the last uh application. Seven feet is minimum required. Existing is two point oh on the north side, eight point oh on the south side. We're remaining to at two point oh in the north. We are going to seven point oh on the south to the cantilevered master bath. And then we are proposing that again. So the combined side yard setbacks at sixteen feet required, the existing is ten, we are proposing nine and we are. We continue to propose nine. Our lot coverage at fifty percent maximum. The existing is fifty-one point three. The prior submission was fifty-four. We're at fifty-five point five. Because in the prior plan, we were stacking some of our front porch. With with the cantilever of of the second floor. The front porch is smaller, but it still is one point one percent more lot coverage than. What than what 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 we had. And then the building coverage, similar kind of thing, thirty-five percent allowed, forty-three point three percent existing. Forty-four point six percent prior application, forty-four point nine percent. Uh, this application. The lot coverage also counts in some of the the front walk, it looks like. So we are, we are proposing forty-four point nine percent where thirty-five is allowed and forty-three point three is existing. We are um. Number of stories allowed is two point five. I did not change those two numbers, but I believe Ms. Gable. Is calling it three stories because we've got half a story for the basement and half a story for the attic and two full floors. So that would be actually another variance we we would require. Um, the building height as measured per the ordinance is thirty feet. From the average grade to the highest point of the ridge. The existing house is nineteen point nineteen foot eight inches. The prior submission was twenty-eight foot. Even, and our new proposal is twenty-seven foot two to the to the highest point of the ridge as measured per the ordinance. Our FAR is uh. Maximum FAR is point four. The existing house is at point three five. Um. The prior submission was. One point one three and the current proposed is one point one three as well. We're still proposing roughly the same square footage.
What's the existing on, what's the existing on the floor, Mr. Cronin? The the schedule I had from last time showed point seven, not point three five.
I apologize. It is, it is point seven. That's that's my mistake because uh I grabbed the wrong uh uh. Part, the point seven includes the the cellar, the basement, rather. That's my my mistake on this.
All right, thank you.
And then the uh the twenty-two hundred uh maximum square footage. Uh, five hundred and twenty-two square feet existing, which. Uh, and eleven hundred and seventy-one square feet. Proposed and then we are. I have a typo here. Uh, I apologize, but um. The the six. Sixteen ninety-three was sixteen ninety-three and we were at sixteen eighty-eight. Proposed.
Sixteen.
Again, it was a typo.
Sixteen ninety-three in the prior submission, sixteen eighty.
Sixteen. Eight, sixteen eighty-eight in this submission. We're actually losing five square feet in the uh. We're removing a twenty-five foot square for the covered porch and we're adding a foot to the rear, which is twenty. Square feet roughly, so we're netting five square feet less than a prior submission.
Before we flip off this sheet with regard to building height, did I understand you to suggest that the uh nine William Street application was approved at something like twenty-three feet? But as constructed, it was closer to twenty-six?
No, no, uh, what I said, and I I can humiliate the drawings is uh. The I I had a dimension on there. Because I determined the height from the from the top of block. Uh, when I originally figured out nine William Street from top. Block to ridge, nine William is twenty-three foot four.
Stop for a second.
Ordinance from the average grade.
Stop, stop. Where where does that come from? Where does that measurement come from?
The twenty-three foot four? Yeah, I I it. Well, it it's, I, when I did the nine William Street drawing, I calculated it. The top of block was a given. And I knew. And I could calculate the the height of the building from there. I measured from top of block to grade at the four corners, averaged it, and that's how I got the overall building height.
Okay. So so that, so that's what's on those plans.
Correct.
And but you mentioned another number twenty minutes ago, which was twenty-five something.
Twenty-three foot four is top of block to ridge. As measured per ordinance, it's twenty-five foot nine. From the average grade to the ridge.
So you're telling me that your plans show twenty-three feet, but the but the system on which it is measured is different from what you're showing here tonight? Because here you've mentioned, you mentioned.
I showed both numbers on on the elevations. The one was to show the math on how I got the building height. Because I also had a chart with the heights of the of the four corners of the foundation. And then the other was the twenty-three foot four added to the average of the four corners of the foundation, which got me. My building height.
I I I think you're too smart, certainly for me, and I don't know, maybe other members of the board as well. Uh, from the top of grade to the top of the ridge as constructed, how tall is nine Williams?
Twenty-five foot nine.
From the top of grade to the top of the ridge as proposed, your new home will be twenty-seven point two or twenty-seven.
Correct.
The delta is two. And last meeting, we discussed. Last meeting, we discussed a number that was much lower and you're highlighting for the board that you were using a bad number when you told us twenty-three and change. Because it was measured based on.
I I I didn't bring up the twenty-three. I I I believe you mentioned it and I took it. On face because I didn't have the sheets in front of me.
I think um we read it, we read it from a board document, like either the approval or the plans. But I guess you're explaining that it can be measured different ways and that twenty-three feet number is measured from top of block, not from grade. And your twenty-seven feet is measured from grades. You're asking us to compare apples and apples. Am I am I following you?
Yeah. It I also figured the top of block number for eleven William. Um. Which is twenty-three foot six. Uh, so that's the frame, the the wood frame, which I can, you know, calculate with math and trigonometry. I can do that to figure out the height of the building. I measure, again, measure the four corners of the foundation and and I get the the average height. Of the base of the of the the average height to measure the the height from.
Mr. Cronin, I mean. It may not always seem like it, but I'm really trying to help. I think the reason you're identifying the 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 top of block height. Is because you're trying to draw a comparison to explain how compact this house is and efficient in comparison to nine Williams. It has a similar level of construction above the foundation?
Yes. I was more brought up the. Top of block to ridge numbers because the twenty-three foot four was discussed at the last meeting and I wanted to clear up. What that number is versus the actual number as approved. That's all.
And the last piece of this is that this structure, as it sits today, has a higher foundation than nine Williams, correct?
Correct, yes.
Got it. Okay, did we go through all the data or do you have another chart with more zoning data?
I've got the uh. The building area part. Uh, the building and lot coverage number. Um. Like I said, the uh. The existing house was at ten forty-four, sixteen ninety-three as proposed the last time, sixteen eighty-eight as proposed this time. The basement hasn't really changed. The first floor. We reduce by five square feet and the second floor doesn't change. It just shifts on the building. Um. We're adding a little bit of coverage for both building and lot because we're. We're separating the porch from the cantilever, although the cantilevers are getting smaller. Um. So the total impervious coverage is is. Nineteen feet more than than prior uh than the prior application. Uh, and the uh building area is uh. Five square feet more than the prior application. The front porch, the exposed front porch the last time was sixty square feet and we're at sixty-five square feet. Um. And then going on to the next sheet.
I have a quick question about this chart, Mr. Cronin, if that's all right. Um, can you just confirm that in doing the building coverage calculations that that also takes into account the cantilevered portions of the home?
Yes, yes, I used the uh the. The building coverage, I I use the six oh nine for the second floor, which includes the one foot cantilever.
Perfect, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that was caught in that calculation. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Cronin, before you go to the sketch, which is the next logical step. Do do any board members have any questions regarding the dimensions of the proposed structure? How these dimensions compared to the structure proposed in June um and the variances that are triggered by the application?
Chairman, I just have one question about the the front and the rear setback, just to clarify. And, Mr. Cronin, I apologize if I missed this, but you're pushing the house back from William Street a foot. But yet the rear setback got worse by a foot and a half. Can you just explain that?
Uh, we're doing a. Couple of things, the the. The. Prior application, the prior submission had the the rear walls of the house flush. And the front of the second floor cantilevering out two feet over a five-foot porch. So we are now taking the front of the first floor. We're moving that back a foot, lining the second floor up with that, which essentially moves the second floor back three feet. But we're still keeping a one foot of the five-foot porch moving back from the front setback. And then our stair. And we're adding a foot to the first floor to make up for the for the covered porch we're taking out. And then we're still doing a three and a half foot um. Steps coming out from the kitchen door. Okay, thank you. So some of the coverage, some of the setback is it was overlapping and now it's overlapping in a different way.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Cronin, let's move to the sketch where you show the uh the uh original plan um with the new plan.
Okay, um. The the. The plan sheets are uh. The front door is essentially where. Everybody understands we're moving the the house back a foot, but we've got the stairs coming up straight. Straight into the front porch. The second floor extends out over the five-by-five covered porch as Ms. Gable mentioned. You wa, we walk into. The foot of the stairs and the great room and then it's essentially the same footprint. Um, it's it's the same layout going back. We've added a foot to make up. To create twenty square feet to make up for the square footage of the twenty-five square foot front porch we're removing. In the front, we've we reworked the windows and added a French door and then added this this five-foot by thirteen-foot porch. Bringing it in from the the south side by two feet, which gives us ten feet from the. From the uh the side of the porch to the property line, which is reasonable for parking a car and opening a door. We've taken out the conflict of coming up and down the stairs on that side by moving it over to the to the more traditional front stairs coming up. Um. The second floor remains intact itself. It just, it is now. The first floor is a foot longer, so it was twenty-eight feet. Now it's twenty-nine feet long. The second floor is still thirty thirty feet long, so we are now flushed with the front and cantilevering out a foot in the back. But the second floor layout is essentially the same aside from some windows at the front of the master. If you then look at the. The side elevation sketch. We've got, I've got the the proposed, the newly proposed elevation drawn and then I drew in. Red dotted lines, the original profile of of the house to show. How far that that it is moving back. The 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 line to the to the. The furthest right line is would be the the front of the the old proposed porch. The porch is moving back a foot. The second line on the on the first floor there on the lower vertical line is the existing front of the house, which are moving back a foot. You see the the covered porch, then you see the two-foot cantilever above. Coming over the gable and then the little three-foot porch there. So then in the rear, we are. Sliding, sliding the first floor back a foot and adding a foot. So the second, so the first floor is two feet back further than it was. And we are. Sliding back the the cantilever where, yes, we are, we are then taking the two-foot cantilever from the front. And cantilever levering it out the back, which is only a one foot because we've added a foot to the first floor. And then we've dropped the ridge of the of the building ten inches. So we are essentially the, although the porch is a foot further away. The mass of the second floor and the roof is actually three feet further away and for and a foot. Shy of where nine William Street is, which is actually a larger volume, a larger looking volume in the front.
So the red, Mr. Cronin, the 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 red was the original proposal. The original proposal.
Correct.
Uh, um, intended to project beyond the existing front facade by how much? How far was that cantilever?
The cantilever's two feet and then the porch is an additional three feet.
So so you pulled off that cantilever, so now effectively it's going to be in line with the front of the house? Or you're pushing it back even further uh from the existing front?
We are pushing back the front of the first and second floor. The first and the second floor will be aligned a foot. Shy, a foot further away than the existing front of the house is today.
Okay, so you pushed the porch back a foot, but you've managed to push the front of the house as proposed back three feet. But back a full foot from where it would exist if you projected straight up.
Correct.
Got it. And with regard to the reduction in the ridge height of of ten or eleven inches, you've consolidated. Um, and changed your construction techniques to create that savings. But in terms of, in terms of the available space, um, your testimony is that between the first and the second floor. Fitting within that space, that there is the same efficiency that exists at nine Williams and the two feet. Uh, maybe it's slightly less than that. The difference between nine Williams and eleven Williams is um the result of the foundation height. Being two feet different, but not um any excess that you've built into this project. Uh, because it is in fact just as efficient. Is that correct?
It's close to just as efficient. I think we're sixteen inches higher. We're not a full two feet higher. Um. I mean, the height difference.
But that 16 inches is found entirely within the foundation, correct? Or is it partially what you're building on top of it?
Our construction is two inches higher than our from from our the bottom of our fourth first floor joists to our ridge is two inches higher than than that of Nine William.
Okay, Mr. Cronin, thank you for going back over it again. I think that's all pretty clear.
Thank you.
Do you have anything further to present to the board?
No, I do not.
Mr. McHugh, I see we've lost you, at least lost your video. Do you have anything further that you want to present to the board with regard to the change design?
No, I like how Matt had kept that red line in there for comparison. Like we said, it's, you know, at the end of the day, it's a 1,688 square foot house including the basement. You know, it's easy to get kind of lose the forest through the trees thing here, but just trying to make it as livable as possible with the conditions that we're dealing with here.
Okay, any board members have any questions of Mr. McHugh or Mr. Cronin?
I have a question about the apparently there's another variance that's being requested now because the basement's a half floor and the attic's a half floor, Elena?
Correct, they need the variance for a number of stories. One of the biggest differences between this application and the neighbor's application, which was here a couple of years ago, is that the neighbor's house had a cellar, so it didn't count as a half-story. And it also didn't count towards the habitable floor area. Whereas this house, the basement sits up a little bit higher, so it is a basement. And because it's a basement, it counts as habitable floor area and as a half-story. And because you're essentially getting a two-story home with a basement and an attic space, you go a half-story, one-story, two-story, another half-story, so it comes out to be three stories.
And that's because the basement is more than 50% above ground, is that?
Correct. Yeah, it's more than half of the floor-to-ceiling height is above grade.
So do we know how much percent of percent of the basement is above ground here in this house?
I I don't know if I have that calculation. I'm not sure if Mr. Cronin might have it offhand.
It's it's very close, the, I'm trying to pull it up now.
It is an existing condition. I I don't believe they're making it any worse by these proposed improvements. You know, it's just kind of what it is.
It's inches, it's not even a foot. The issue is even if the McHughes knocked the block down to make it a cellar, then it
Right.
you couldn't even stand up in it. Because the the head height down there is still just over seven feet.
I see.
And they're trying to salvage as much of the house as possible to reuse.
Thank you.
Elena, did you have a separate question? I saw you raising your hand politely.
I did, I do have a separate question. Just one of the comments that I made in my most recent report was can you just, I'm not sure if this was provided at the last meeting, I did listen to the recording. But can you just provide some testimony about the materials and colors for the dwelling, for the exterior?
The materials are gonna be, it's gonna be probably a vinyl siding, asphalt shingle roof, probably use an AZAC or PVC trim around vinyl clad windows, Anderson's probably. Either PVC clad front columns or maybe some of those permacast columns, vinyl railing. Part, we're gonna parage or cement block, cement the the block on the the exposed block of the foundation. And then probably use a thin brick at the at the base of the, which is a facade brick. It's almost like a cultured stone at the base of the the front porch.
And another question that kind of goes a little bit hand in hand with this is, is there any landscaping proposed that you know of at this time?
We hadn't really discussed it. I'm sure the I could, we could work with the McHughes and come up with something that would be acceptable. Mike, do you have any?
No, just, I mean, right now in the front, actually, there's a a small landscape with some seagrass, small flowers. But we haven't really thought about that too much. Just if anything, just natural species, no trees. There's none existing now. And maybe a few bushes, something like that.
Typical foundation plantings?
Yeah, yes.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other board questions before we open to the public? Seeing none, if there are any members of the public that have any questions or would like to make any comments with regard to the application, I would ask you now, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll pull you forward to contribute. Anybody standing?
Yep, I'm gonna bring forward Jen Spitz. And Mr. Cronin, if you could unshare your screen.
Sure.
Ms. Spitz, I think you're muted.
Hi, how are you? Sorry, it was the whole Zoom rebooted when you brought me into the panel view.
Ms. Spitz, could you give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Sure, it's Jennifer Spitz, S's in Sam, P's in Peter, I, T's in Thomas, Z's in zebra. And I'm at 26 William Street.
And I'm gonna swear in, you do swear in testimony to give the board of your truth altered, not but truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I sat through the last meeting and and listened to all of your comments and watched Mr. Cronin and my neighbor Mike, you know, talk through what their plans were. And and I'm, you know, sat here again tonight and and at last meeting I spoke to you know, my hope for them to 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 get the approval of the board that we're, you know, happy with our neighbors and we want to make sure that they're happy and comfortable in the neighborhood and that they get to stay here and and raise their kids here. You know, I see the plans that they brought forward tonight and to me it looks like they've addressed a lot of the concerns that you raised and, you know, I think it's a, it seems like a good compromise and I'm you know, in full support of them having this home and this porch and, you know, getting to have the house that they, you know, that they really want. And so as as a neighbor and a friend and somebody whose kids play together on a very regular basis, I just wanted to show my support for my neighbor.
Thank you, Ms. Spitz. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions with regard to the McHugh application?
I don't see any others.
Ms. Papa, I'm not sure if you noticed, I can certainly give this to Mrs. Larson tomorrow, she could designate to the board, but I forward you Mr. Cronin's most recent plans.
Okay.
If the board would like to, if you could forward them, forward that to the board, if they would like to further review. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so we've opened to the public. Mr. McHugh, do you have anything in closing?
In closing, thank you for your time, your consideration, your comments, of course. I think Mr. Cronin covered everything, you know, we are trying to take the considerations into the board, moving it back, sacrificing some square footage, may not seem like a lot, but given the total square footage, less than 2,000 square foot, it adds up quickly and losing closets. Doesn't help either, but I hope this, you know, compromise and is, looks good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McHugh. We're gonna deliberate now, so no more testimony.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board.
All right, Board, deliberate.
I'll start. I I think that Mr. Cronin, as always, has done a great job taking the board's comments and and making some changes. I personally didn't have a problem with the bulk from the first application. Remember, we're talking about a house that's 20 feet wide. We're not talking about a 75-foot-wide house or a 4,000-square-foot house that's right on the street, it's 20 feet wide. And the bulk towards the front of the house that is in real terms from a property that narrow is not the same as even houses two or three doors down on a 50-foot-wide lot that are 35 feet wide or 37 feet wide. Moving the second floor back mitigates any of the front porch bulk, I think. And the reduction of height and flattening the roof even by six or eight inches will will have an effect as well. I don't see any reason that we should consider this to be too much for the lot. Remember, this is a property and anybody that was on the board for the Nine William Street. And there were some discussions against being able to develop that property, but but we're trying to make the most out of a really small house that I applaud the McHughes for taking the project on and trying to keep this house as a viable property in the in the neighborhood. And I have my full support for this this application.
I guess I'll jump in, Mr. Chairman. Clearly, one of the most challenging lots to build on in all Fairhaven. I think that Mr. Cronin has done a nice job of of trying to minimize the masses, as Mr. Natchez said. I like the changes that Mr. Cronin made and I appreciate his efforts to try to be sensitive to the concerns raised from last time. One thing I wanted to bring up, if there is a motion to approve, we had talked last time about putting in some kind of for lack of a better word, shutters on on the north side of the of the of the building to try to break it up in a similar manner that was done to the house next door. I just want to make sure that that's captured if we go forward.
Should I call on people?
I don't have too much to add. I mean, this is a obviously severely limited by the property here. And this is why we have variances. I mean, this is extremely difficult to work with. I think the applicant and his architect certainly took into account our prior comments and concerns about proximity to the street and the bulk up front. I think the changes to the front porch are a good compromise, which meet the applicant's needs and, you know, meet, address the concerns that we raised. I I think plan looks good and and don't have much more to add. I think we're stuck with a lot of existing non-conformities. This is a significant improvement in my mind to the surrounding neighborhood and to the existing lot, working with the existing structure and and the existing lot. So I don't have much more to add or any other concerns.
I'll weigh in. This is a very modest house. And it's a very modest lot. It's 30% basically of what's required. And it's a tremendous challenge and the house is too big for the lot, the lot is too small for the neighborhood. And it's compliment complicated by the fact that the same issue exists over at Nine William Street. I I think that the McHughes and the architect have done everything possible to make this a livable house. And giving the constraints that have been handed them with the property and all, I think they've done a good job with it. And, you know, short of you know, just saying that this is a tremendous challenge, I I would have to say that they've done a good job trying to make it as livable as possible. So I I'm okay with it.
I'm in favor of the application. I think that they listened to some of the comments that were made last time and it's a great design. I like the separate door and the porch and I agree with what other people have said.
Consala Ridgeway, Shavati, anything to add or has it been said already?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's been said already. I would agree with all the comments thus far, challenges everywhere. I would definitely credit Mr. Cronin and McHugh for bringing this project forward. I think as they propose you know, this, these additions to this property, I would be supportive of any resolution to move this ahead. Thank you.
See ahead now from Consala, anything further up?
I I don't know, I just wonder where it stops eventually. I I thought when 165 Third Street was up that that was the smallest lot that we'd ever seen a an expansion of non-conformities on and that was something that backed up to open public land and a couple of backyards, so there was nothing around it. And we had Nine Williams, Nine William Street come up an even smaller lot. You know, the questions asked at that point, is there any land that's available to purchase to make this any more conforming? And at the time, the answer there was no. Here we've got the twin lot to Nine William. It's been owned for 17 years and Nine William changed hands four years ago. Wonder if that wasn't an opportunity for the applicant to to purchase the additional land and and create certainly not a conforming lot, but a more conforming lot where they could expand without such a large number of variances and large variances. You know, it's that we just seem to keep getting smaller and smaller non-conforming lots in town that are coming before the board and you know, sort of overmaxed. It's but, you know, that's my opinion on the on the subject.
All right, so I think you've heard.
I acknowledge that some work has been done to try and mitigate the original plan, but it's still for the lot that it's on to be, you know, more more house than than fit. That's that's about it.
Okay, so we've heard from everybody. Does anyone want to make a motion? We should just confirm, Mr. Chair, that everyone who was here was here last time would be eligible to vote. If anyone was not here, did not either listen to the tape or or view the video and sign a certification, then they would be eligible to participate in the vote. So is there anyone here tonight who was not here last time? That attendance, well done. Okay, so 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 there's no response, so everyone would be eligible. It's the first seven, Sandy, you don't get to the alternates. And remember, there's de-variance relief, so it requires five affirmative votes for the de-variance relief, okay?
I'll make a motion then to approve the application as submitted on the condition that the revised plans show the shutters on the north side of the building as the original ones did.
And comply with any requirements or recommendations set forth in the board planner's report? And comply with any requirements or recommendations set forth in the Board Planner's Report.
Just what I was gonna say, Mr. Henry.
I, I knew that, Mr. Nuchasny. I knew that.
Uh, Mr. Nuchasny, is that just shutters or is there a false window opening covered by shutters as part of a package?
You know, I don't have the original plan in front of me and I remember that Mr. Cronin had addressed it in the first plan. But, uh, being as we have not seen the new drawings, technical drawings from that elevations, I don't know what was in the first one.
Maybe faux windows covered with shutters?
Oh, windows covered with shutters, sounds really nice.
At the end of your motion?
That's it.
Hanging out there looking for a second. Quigley.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
All same. Congratulations, Mr. McHugh. And thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, the Board.
Next application is the McHale Duff application. Do we see counsel?
I see Mr. Akins in the attendees.
Yeah, very good. Alright, the McHale Duff matter. Uh, if you're here for that matter, please use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you forward. And while we're getting set up, Mr. Chairman, this matter was continued from an earlier meeting of the Board. And we're gonna swear in Ms. Gable as our professional planner. Do you swear a testimony to the Board of Truth Ultra than nothing but truth?
I do.
Okay, and it was carried from, I believe, was the May twenty-two thousand twenty-one meeting without the necessitively notice. And we'll let Mr. Akins put his appearance on the record as soon as we can zoom him in here. Sandy, can you pull him forward? I see him there. Mr. and Mrs. McHale Duff, are you sure that he's, uh, free of his other meeting and he's actually here? Mr. Chairman, he just sent me a text. He's here.
There he is.
Can you hear me and see me okay? Good evening, everyone. Ken, greetings. Terrific. Great, I'm coming through, okay? Very good. Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. This is a continuation of our, uh, last hearing. Uh, please recall at that meeting that the Board had raised a number of comments and concerns with, uh, the design that had been prepared by Mr. Lawrence, the architect. Um, the McHale Duffs, uh, and their team heard those concerns. And to give a brief summary before we get into the specific testimony, uh, the primary concern was to seek to reduce the cap variance. It has been reduced by some two hundred and thirty-nine square feet. In addition, several of the Board members had comments with regard to the second floor effectively being a clean sheet of paper. We heard those comments and slightly more than two hundred square feet of those two hundred and thirty-nine square feet relate to a reduction purely on the second floor. Uh, as a result of some reconfiguration of the footprint on the first floor, uh, we have, uh, eliminated the combined side yard setback, uh, which obviously is a very favorable thing. So with that, please recall that Mr. and Mrs. McHale Duff are present this evening. Mr. Lawrence, the project architect, is present. And I believe Jason Fichter, the project, uh, licensed planner, he's also licensed engineer, is available for expert testimony with regard to planning issues. So, uh, at this time, the applicant would, uh, recall Paul Lawrence, please. Mr. Lawrence, if you'd raise your right hand, we're gonna swear and do some testimony to the Board of Truth Ultra than nothing but the truth.
I do.
And I believe you submitted subsequent to the last meeting revised architectural plans prepared by I House Architecture, eight sheets, last dated or dated revised through June twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Alright, we're gonna mark that as exhibit. Mr. Akins, what do you have?
A, a four.
I, I agree, a four. So that'd be a four, Sandy. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Um, is there, if I share these?
Please do.
It's important to know that Mr. Lawrence is doing this all on his own without help.
Uh, you caught me.
Just a technical.
Okay. You do see it now, yes?
We, we do. We, we see, uh, sheet A one.
Okay.
Of exhibit A four.
Of exhibit A four.
Oh, thank you. Very quickly, uh, as Mark just stated, I'll, I'll point out on this, the, uh, changes. On the right-hand side, we, we pulled the back of the house in towards, um, towards the street. So on the right-hand side, we now have seventeen point nine-three feet of setback where previously it was seventeen point six-five. Um, the mudroom at the back of the house was previously twenty point four-one. It is now twenty-two point six-seven. So that brings our combined side yard setbacks to forty point six, where forty is required. So we've eliminated that side yard setback issue. I'm gonna now, I'll switch to so this is just a colorized version of your sheet A eight on exhibit A four.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna mark this exhibit A dash five, color-enhanced version of she what? Of exhibit A four, thank you.
And this just, this illustrates where we made the reductions. If you, uh, so across the back of the house, the, the entire house was pulled in six inches. So that was taken out of the kitchen and the family room at the back. The mudroom on the left-hand side at the back of the house, we lost sixteen inches out of the length of the mudroom so that we gained, um, eight square feet there. The closet got smaller by two feet, so that was four point seven. So the, the total reduction on the first floor was thirty-eight point two square feet. Up on the second floor, at the back of the house again, we, we actually came in eight inches on the second floor. So we've, we, we lost twenty-four square feet at the back of the house. The, uh, bathroom on the right-hand side at the back was reduced by nine point two, down nine point two square feet. But the bulk of the square footage, um, change is in the room over the garage on the left-hand side of the house. So, um, that, we lost a hundred and sixty-three point four square feet plus another four point two square feet out of the bathroom area in the, that joins the main body of the house. I'm going to, uh, switch back to the set. I'm gonna try to switch back to.
Mr. Lawrence, could you zoom that in a little bit or make it a little bit bigger? I'm having a very difficult time seeing the change that you just illustrated there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's better. Okay, great. So that was, the blue is the original, uh, submission and the inside bit is what's, what you're proposing now. Is that, that's correct, right?
Yes, so the, the, the room, um, the whole shed dormer that faces the driveway got pulled in towards the house. Lost some of the width of that dormer and the two, um, attic areas on either side of the dormer were, were lost in terms of living space.
Got it. Thank you, I appreciate that.
How are they lost? If the dormers are still there and the bulk is still there, how is it no longer counted as square footage?
Because it's not accessible.
So, h- how much of the, how much of the structure change versus the categorization of it is habitable versus not habitable?
Well, the, the goal with all of these changes was to get the square footage down, but not dramatically alter the look of the house. We took a lot of time to get to a look that, uh, McHale Duffs were really happy with. And so we, we lost habitable floor area, but we're trying to keep the look the same.
And shall we segue now to those elevations?
Certainly.
And, and sorry, just in total, what was the reduction on the second floor, about two hundred square feet?
Two hundred point eight.
Yes.
Thanks. So is that two thirty-nine total as compared to the last?
It is, two thirty-nine total.
So, um, the, the layout on the first floor is, is essentially the same that it is. It's just the loss of space in the all-important mudroom and taking the, the six inches across the back of the house so that the reduction in the kitchen and the family room. And again, because we're saving the existing structure, um, we were kind of, uh, were, were stuck with the front of the house and with the reductions were, um, had to be focused on the rear of the house. Because the, the entire right-hand side of the front of the house is the existing. The dining room and foyer is the existing living room. The office and pantry is, is currently the existing breezeway. And the garage, um, the right-hand side of, of the garage wall is the existing garage wall. We were adding again the, the three feet so that it makes it a functional garage where it currently isn't. The second floor, uh, were the more dramatic changes. Um, the reduction of the bathroom size. We, the master bedroom and bathroom arrangement was flipped to make for more room for the staircase coming up from the first floor. And the big change was the bedroom over the garage. Um, the loss of the walk-in closet that faced the street um, and necessitated the rearrangement of the closets for both of the front bedrooms and the bathrooms. So, um, there's, although the bedroom at the center of the house on the second floor hasn't changed size, um, the closet is dramatically smaller. As is the closet for the bedroom above the garage. Um, again, the, the look essentially stays the same. One of the things though, is in the loss of depth, we, um, reduced the height of the house. Where previously we were thirty-one point five, we're at thirty-one point one. So, Mr. Lawrence, I'm gonna ask the question last, or, but I'm gonna ask it with this in front of us. Um, can you show us where from the front of the house, there's any change in the envelope uh, as a result of the changes to the plans between last time and tonight? From the elevation, you can't see a change. If that's what you're asking, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
I think so. Can you, can you show the side in the rear elevation and answer the same question, please?
And it's, it's the same answer, that there's, the, the changes were of an extent to keep the same look. Now, uh, let me bring up, um, an elevation that we prepared. This is the, um, north elevation as proposed on the right-hand side. This is a north elevation without the attic area that were, we have eliminated as far as living space. Um, and you, you can see what happens is where the dormer on the right-hand side is a feature on the roof of the garage. It becomes the entire roof on the left-hand's version. So that's where that area that we, we reduce the size of the room, we kept in the structure, but we're not gonna access it and have no need to access it with the rearrangement of the bathroom and closets to make this reduction possible. So aesthetically, it, it hasn't changed, but the square footage has.
A- and Mr. Lawrence, in, in your opinion, the, the right drawing that, that you haven't displayed in front of us is the preferred one aesthetically?
Um, I, I would trust the, the Board looks at enough of these houses that they for themselves can see that the, the one on the left-hand side is not what you want. It's, it's a kind of, hell, it's ugly. It doesn't go with the house. It doesn't go with the neighborhood. I, I wouldn't do this on, on a house where I just wouldn't do this.
Thank you. And this is not part of the other set of plans, is that right, Mr. Lawrence? So we'll mark this separately?
Yes.
This will be exhibit A dash six. We'll call it comparison sketch aesthetics, north elevation, A six. Thank you.
I have a question about this diagram. Um, so you're essentially only proposing a certain amount of habitable space above the garage, but you're gonna keep the bulk of the building there as dead space? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, it's my understanding that just because you wall off an area, it still needs to be included in the habitable floor area calculation.
I, I thought from the, um, our, the last time we were in front of the Board, it was said that, uh, if you can't access the space, in fact, the Chairman was talking about this, uh, with other houses where they wall off the area above the garage, so it's not accessible with a thick staircase, that it's not included as habitable area. So I took from that, that if you can't access it, it's not part of the calculation. Uh, I don't wanna be in the center of this, not one bit. Um, I, I did say that, uh, and that is true. Uh, under various interpretations of our ordinances, people have built plenty of garage spaces that have, um, volume, um, that is substantial. And those areas are not included as part of the habitable square footage. At least they're built without getting variances. However, those buildings are not, uh, they do not have walls the way that you've inserted them. They are, uh, not accessible because they are above the garage and there's a, a wall between those two portions of the structure. Uh, this zoning board has historically interpreted our ordinances to say that we go sill plate to sill plate and that's where the measurements are. Um, you know, it's funny because last time what we were looking at was, uh, a, a design that was honest. Because you basically said we're gonna use it all and I made that comment. It was honest. And in comparison to the way other houses look, it wasn't gonna look substantially different. But what's happened here is something different. You've essentially done what some others have done in terms of working through the ordinances, but please don't let the Board understand that your determination as to the square footage of this house is based on my comments, uh, with regard to that game. Well, I, I think with the changes that we made to the floor plan, it was, it's an honest attempt to reduce the square footage. So we, we didn't just take the walk-in closet out of the front of the bedroom and that space at the, that extra space at the back of the bedroom. We've rearranged the entire layout, so there's still a walk-in closet, there's still bathrooms. So where, where we are is still honest here. It's just the, we kept that area because, for aesthetics.
And so the Board has before it, Mr. Lawrence, a less desirable aesthetic alternative which holds, I guess, technically, uh, true to the ordinance, uh, but at the price of aesthetics in your Uh but at the price of aesthetics, in your professional opinion, you're saying.
Yes.
Well, let's just be clear. There's certainly more than two ways to do this, and it isn't just A or B is currently on the screen. So if you wanted to keep the layout and the footprint the way you have it. Perhaps these are the two most straightforward examples of how you could build it. But you know, let's let's not put a the false choice out there that these are the only two ways to do it. Um a- and I didn't mean to suggest that the applicant, to be clear, is in any way dishonest. I was describing the structure. Um everybody that's been before this board and and watching any of these hearings knows that we don't judge the applicants. We judge the plans. We're not allowed to evaluate um how nice the applicants are um or or what have you. But I made that comment last week, uh last month and or two months ago, and and now it's coming back up and I'm explaining it.
Mr. Atkins, can you please summarize what the variances are that are triggered by the application before us tonight?
Right, so uh it would seem as though the uh. The variance would be to exceed the cap by three hundred and twenty one point eight square feet. That would be the the only new variance, I believe.
Why don't you summarize top to bottom what variances are being requested tonight?
That's it.
There's one variance and it's, I'm sorry, how many square feet over the cap?
Ex- exceeding the cap by three hundred and twenty one point eight square feet, if my math is right. That's the only variance. Otherwise, it fully conforms. We eliminated the the combined side yard setback variance.
Right, but.
And. Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
Um I was just gonna say that um based upon the revised drawings, it exceeds the habitable floor area. Square cap. By, I'm looking up for the exact number in my report. Um.
We're we're at thirty five forty one point eight, so that would be, if my math is right, that would be three twenty one point eight above thirty two twenty.
Right, so but that doesn't take into account that dead space of the habitable room above the garage, right?
It it doesn't, not as not as presently proposed.
Okay. I I think that space needs to be included in that calculation.
Well, may maybe there's a di- maybe there's a different way. There are architectural techniques, Mr. Lawrence, that can be utilized so that that is not included. You worked hard to bring the number down. You brought it down by two hundred and thirty nine square feet. We'd like not to put it back in.
Um. I I'm at a loss i- if.
Like, is there another space in the house that you could shave off habitable floor area without having to change? If you put back in the original room above the garage, is are there other opportunities elsewhere to shave off that same habitable floor area?
Well, be be before before we do that, I I think maybe we should have some testimony from Mr. Fichter. As to uh his review of the plan. And his determination as to exceeding the cap relative to what he understands habitable floor area to be per the ordinance. May may we may we do that, Mr. Chairman?
Of course. Is is he gonna discuss the. Context of the fixed staircase to the attic as part of that?
Let's ask.
Mr. Fisher, would you give us your full name, spell your last year address to the record, please?
Yep, Jason Fichter, F I C H T E R. We're at uh inside engineering, by the way, we're at nineteen fifty five Route thirty four in Wall.
And if you'd raise your right hand and swear in, you swear your testimony, give the board a bit of truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Atkins, you want to qualify, Mr. Fichter?
I shall. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Good evening. Do you possess any licenses issued by the state of New Jersey?
I'm a licensed professional planner and licensed professional engineer, both in the state of New Jersey.
How long have you been so licensed?
Uh as an engineer since two thousand one, and if I recall correctly, my planning license was by exam. And came in the following year in two thousand two.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Fichter on numerous occasions has been qualified by your board to give expert testimony in these areas.
He has, we'll stipulate. Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fichter, calling your attention to the revised plans prepared by Mr. Lawrence. Have you had an opportunity to review them?
I have.
What can you share with the board about the requested variance for exceeding the habitable floor area cap?
Okay, uh i- if it pleases everybody here, what I'll do is I'll go through my testimony. Uh which regardless of the question that was just discussed about uh the dead space. Uh my testimony will remain the same, a tiny little difference, but it really doesn't change my testimony. So I think it would help if I went through all of that to to provide a a broad perspective of everything. And then when that's done, if you like, we can dig in a little bit more to what that dead space means. So if that's good, uh I'll jump into it. Uh this property.
That's good.
Thank you. So this property is in the R ten B zone. And in this zone, ten thousand square foot lots are required. This property is oversized at thirteen thousand eight hundred thirty seven. So the applicant is seeking to renovate the existing home and make it a long term home for their growing family. The applicant and their architect went back to the drawing board based on your feedback at the prior hearing. And as a result of that, the habitable floor area has been reduced. And the combined side yard variance has been eliminated. So the the sole variance that we're seeking tonight is for habitable floor area, which I'm gonna. Uh provide to you under the C two criteria, and I'll go through all those proofs. So your ordinance permits three thousand two hundred twenty square feet of habitable floor area. The original application was for three thousand seven hundred eighty point eight. That's been reduced now to three thousand five hundred forty one point eight. The FAR, it's worth noticing, the floor area ratio is well below uh the maximum that's permitted. Uh we're proposing point two five six where point two eight is permitted. The goal here is to create a long term home for the growing McElda family. And bring the home up to modern standards and expectations. It's also important to note that the applicants both work from home and they have worked from home since well before the pandemic. The applicant and the architect worked together to modernize the home. And work within the fabric of the neighborhood, and I'll I'll get into the details of that as we move along. Another important point uh that's to consider here is the fact that the house was built around nineteen fifty. And based on what I've learned from the applicant and the architect, not much work has been done to the home since that time. So that means a renovation project is gonna face many challenges. Structural issues, wiring, plumbing, insulation, and efficiency will all need to be addressed. For example, the applicant described to me that there's a serious concern with the structural integrity of the second floor. Apparently, it's sagging, and they're concerned that the the sagging is increasing over time. So major rehab rehab is is a part of their plan to fix this and make the home safe and efficient for their family. And this is all very important because we have to consider the alternative. I would think there aren't many people that are willing to invest in renovating this existing dated home. That means it's very likely that an alternative would be for a homeowner or a builder to buy this property. Knock down the house and build a new home. And as you know, your master plan calls that it it calls that uh action a teardown. And specifically discourages it. Your master plan prefers what we're proposing, which is a rehab versus a teardown. So it's important to consider. So in terms of uh purposes of planning, that I think would be advanced if this application was approved as designed. I think this is an appropriate development which promotes the general welfare. The home is very dated and would very much benefit from updating to modern standards. Uh this type of investment can be expected to benefit benefit the value of the entire neighborhood. I believe the applicant architect created a plan uh for the home that's consistent with the neighborhood, and for these reasons, I believe that the general welfare would be advanced. We're also securing safety from fire. Modernizing the home from its nineteen fifties construction will make it a much safer home. For example, the applicant plans to replace the original wiring throughout the house, which will be a great improvement for safety. We're providing adequate light air and open space. The bulk requirements are all compliant. With the exception of the habitable floor area. But it's important to note that the floor area ratio and the building coverage and the setbacks and the height are all compliant. As a matter of fact, they're well below what's permitted. So I believe light air and open space will continue to be provided if this application is approved. I believe we're promoting a desirable visual environment, and this is a key consideration for this application. As I mentioned, the house was built in the nineteen fifties, and again, we understand not much work has been done to it since that time. So this application goes a long way to refreshing this home and making it look beautiful. And making it an attribute to the neighborhood and the borough as a whole. So I believe we're also promoting the maximum practicable recovery and recycling of recyclable materials. For municipal solid waste through the use of planning practices. Designed to incorporate the state recycling plan goals and to complement municipal recycling programs. So this purpose of planning is a part of the backdrop as to why your master plan discourages teardowns. The idea is that by re- renovating the existing home, we're able to reduce waste and reuse the structure. And this not only reduces waste and preserves landfills, it also reduces the burden of providing materials for new construction. The applicant's goal is to upgrade the home consistent with the neighborhood and with their family's needs, so that they're long term. If they were to sell the home, again, I think someone would likely buy it and tear down the existing home, which would be contrary to this purpose of planning. So with these thoughts in mind, I believe we advance this purpose. And lastly, I believe we're conserving property values in the neighborhood. The proposed renovation to this home is a tremendous upgrade for the neighborhood. And much like a rising tide raises all ships, I believe that the renovated home will not only conserve property values, it will more likely improve them. Terms of the negative criteria. This is a renovation to a dated home in a fully developed residential neighborhood. The floor area ratio is well below the maximum permitted. Uh and the proposed home is consistent with the neighborhood. Building coverage is way below the maximum permitted at twenty point one percent, where thirty five percent is permitted. Lot coverage is also way below the maximum permitted at twenty nine point nine percent, where forty five percent is permitted. Now, the key consideration for this application is. An evaluation of the neighborhood as compared to the home that's proposed. So I took a look at the existing homes within the magic two hundred foot radius around the property. Using the uh tax records for all the homes in the neighborhood. I found more than a third of the homes are oversized for the zone. So there's twenty three homes within two hundred feet of this property. Eight of them are oversized in terms of their habitable floor area. We're proposing a habitable floor area variance, but again, we're well below the maximum, the maximum FAR. There are three homes within two hundred feet that exceed both the habitable floor area and the floor area ratio. And there's four homes with a habitable floor area greater than we're proposing. I compared the tax records to what's published on Zillow for some of some of the homes. And I found some discrepancies. So Zillow indicates there's an additional home. That exceeds habitable floor area, floor area ratio, and the habitable floor area that we're proposing. I also took a look at a few of the homes in the neighborhood that are slightly outside of the two hundred foot radius. And uh based on observation and a review of the tax records. I found an additional five homes that exceed the habitable floor area. Three homes that exceed the floor area ratio. And two homes that exceed the habitable floor area that we're proposing. Then again, referring to the information on Zillow for properties outside of two hundred feet. I found two additional homes that exceed the floor area ratio. And two additional homes that exceed the habitable floor area that we're proposing. In total, with all that that I just gave you. There's fourteen homes in this neighborhood that exceed the habitable floor area. Nine homes that exceed the floor area ratio. And ten homes that have a habitable floor area greater than we're proposing. And this is all very important to consider because it shows we're proposing a home consistent with the neighborhood. Before I give you the last piece of the puzzle and the negative criteria, I'd like to ask um Mr. Lawrence if you would pull up that exhibit. All of that information I just gave you about the analysis of the homes in the neighborhood, I put together an aerial exhibit. And highlighted those properties that have homes that exceed the habitable floor area. Uh and the the habitable floor area that we're proposing.
Think we're up to A seven?
Thank you. Okay, so. This is, one second, I just need to pick at my cheat sheet. Alright, so what you're looking at is uh the subject property is in the middle. The property line is outlined in yellow. Uh and the, I'll call it blue line, I think technically it's cyan, the going around the property. That is the magic two hundred foot radius, so you can see all the properties that it touches. Those are the twenty three properties that I mentioned. So all of the homes uh that I mentioned to you that are within the two hundred foot radius are shown on this map. Uh only one of the homes that are outside of the two hundred foot radius are shown on this map. The other homes that are outside of two hundred foot radius are just beyond the limits of this exhibit. I didn't want to zoom out too far, I think you lose perspective, but uh that's why I wanted to provide those quantities in my testimony. The green shading. Represents existing homes in the neighborhood. That exceed the allowable habitable floor area and also exceed the habitable floor area that we're proposing. The blue hatching, there's three uh three lots hatched in the blue. Those are existing homes that exceed the allowable habitable floor area. So this is important to demonstrate when we talk about consistency of the neighborhood and not impacting uh the neighborhood, so. I- in short and in basic terms, we don't ha- we're not proposing a home here. That's so large, it's gonna stand out in the neighborhood. As a matter of fact. It's gonna blend into the neighborhood as proposed. It's not even gonna be the largest. So. Uh that is the summary of that exhibit, and then just moving on in the negative test uh negative criteria testimony. Uh your master plan seeks to avoid teardowns and homes that are out of scale with the neighborhood. And your ordinance i- is a bit unique, uh I've mentioned this to you a number of times, in that you use three levels of control for the size of homes. Uh they are habitable floor area, floor area ratio, and building coverage. We're well below the floor area ratio and way below the building coverage limit. And our analysis of the neighborhood shows that we're proposing a home that's consistent with the scale of the neighborhood. And we're doing it by using an existing home. In other words, the renovation of the applicant's home follows the spirit the spirit of the ordinance and master plan while using the existing home. So with all of this considered, I think if the application was approved as presented. Uh it would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good. And I don't believe it would substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. And of course, as you consider the negative criteria, I always like to highlight that word substantial. You're not looking to see if approving this application would cause a detriment to the public or an impairment to the zone plan. You're looking to see if it would cause a substantial detriment or a substantial impairment. And I don't believe this application rises to the level of substantial in either case. And on balance, I believe that the benefits of this application substantially outweigh its detriments. Giving you the ability to approve this application with confidence. That's all I have for direct unless there's any questions or you want to revisit uh the dead space.
Mr. Fisher. I I I I just I gotta understand, I I understand that that see this one way, but. If the majority of the homes within the circle of the twenty three are not in excess of the limits. How how do we determine that another house that's oversized, even though there is a a large amount of them that already are? Is is not, I mean, a- at what point, I I just don't follow the law. If you said to us seventy five percent of them are over. And will also be over, I get it, but it's the minority of them. And then the second question is, you gave a lot of select. Information about houses outside of that area that were in excess, but you didn't tell us the context as to how many were not. And so I I I don't I don't follow that, and I I want to. I I I understand that you're good at what you do. So so help us understand. So, so help us understand, you know, how we shouldn't be looking at the majority uh, of these homes as opposed to the exceptions.
Well, i- it, it's more than one thing, right? So to answer your question directly. If I was in a situation where an applicant was proposing a habitable floor area next to a home that also exceeded it, but nobody else did. That to me is a story worth telling a board. I'm not saying a board or your board would approve it, but I think that's a story worth telling. If there's one other house in the neighborhood, but it's ten houses down the road. It starts to lose a little bit of its punch. I'm not so sure about that. But to me, when you have eight out of twenty three homes within two hundred feet exceeding the habitable floor area. And, and most of those exceeding what we're proposing. I would classify that as compelling.
Isn't that an argument to be made to the governing body to change the zone? They haven't done that, right?
Not, not in our case. Not in our case. So I'm trying to evaluate the fabric of the neighborhood to see if we're going to cause a substantial detriment.
Well, that's the ne- that's the negative criteria, but on the positive criteria, doesn't the case law tell us that if the governing bodies presume to be aware of those non-conformities? And if they haven't changed their zoning to accommodate them, that that. Failure to change is deemed to be intentional? Isn't an argument to be made to the governing body that maybe the zone should be changed?
I'm not sure they are aware of that.
But, but if that argument's to be made, isn't it more properly made to the governing body, not to the zoning board?
Well, here, here's the other part of.
Well, before we get to the other part. Isn't that correct under the law?
Well, again, so we're evaluating something in a vacuum here, and I, I don't think that's fair. So I have to reply to Mr. Leaders. Uh, a- and I'm not saying your question isn't fair, Mr. Irene, we, we can get to that, but. To finish the response to Mr. Leader, we have to look at the positives and negatives and we have to weigh it. Right? So the other thing here is. There's serious consideration being given of what to do with this house, and this applicant wants to renovate this home. And your master plan puts exclamation points all over the place about renovating homes as opposed to tearing them down. It, th- this home was built in the fifty's, it doesn't work. You know, you can listen to the architect talk about the way it's laid out. Uh, how it's constructed, how the rooms flow. Uh, the house doesn't work. It needs to be renovated to brought up to modern standards. This applicant wants to do that with the existing home. That goes a long way to, to being consistent with your master plan. So again, when we talk about the number of homes in the neighborhood and consistency. That's one thing. And again, I think it's compelling. But we also have to consider what's being done for the home here in terms of consistency with the master plan.
Do we know when those homes were constructed?
Um, do I have it for you now? No, some of them were recent, uh, some of them were not.
Mr. Fisher, if I just can wait one second, you, you cited uh, things that you've picked before the sport many times, and so you know that we heavily discount. The state tax records because they don't measure the same way that we measure, and you cited Zillow as well, and Zillow includes. Lower level in their square footage calculations. I see many, my wife asks me all the time, how is this forty five hundred square feet when we don't allow it? And they say including a lower finished level. So uh, I wouldn't take those numbers as, as gospel, and I agree with you on, on. A, a thousand percent on renovating rather than tearing down, but there's modern standard and then there's. Four bedrooms and four on three bathrooms and four we can walk in closets, and I think that's the struggle that we're talking about.
Alright, so let me respond to that uh, about the, the part about the sizes and tax records. So. Um, the bulk of the weight of what I provided to you is based on tax records and that, that's the borough's tax records and, and that is gospel.
No, then there's state tax records. And we've found in the past where they don't jive with how we measure, that, that many times I can. I can pull up uh, minutes from meetings over the last ten years where we've discounted. Um, what the, the tax record says as opposed to what we know via architectural plans and measurements to know what the true square footage is. So I, I would. Just myself from, from anecdotal experience, think that those numbers aren't exactly as overwhelming as you portray them to be.
Uh, well, I.
Not that I think this is a bad design at all, believe, believe me, I, I. This is my neighborhood and I, and I walk it all the time and I know the, the house and I, and I appreciate the plan. I just want to be clear.
For the record, Mr. Machesi, for the record, you're not located within two hundred feet of the subject property, correct?
No, fair enough.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking, I just want to make sure.
Oh, no, for the record, I am definitely not looking two hundred feet of the subject property.
Okay, thank you.
So let's, let's stick with this for a second, just so we can close the loop on, on the analysis. So. Uh, in terms of the tax records, I took the number off of the tax records and I evaluated them. There were two properties I noticed that had lot area wrong, but I corrected them based on the tax map. For example, the lot adjacent to the applicant's lot. Is exactly the same. It, it's a mirror image of the applicant's lot. Yet it's in the tax records as being twice as large. Right? Uh, in terms of the square footage of the home, I checked the property record cards, which outlines with the mentions. The, the rooms in the home and, and the heated space and whatnot. That record is what those property owners are being taxed on. So if something's wrong there, there's, there's a bigger issue. So we rely on those numbers. In terms of Zillow, that has very little weight in my analysis because the bulk of the properties I provided to you are based on the tax records. Which in terms.
Mentioned it and you cited it as having a floor area ratio increase as well. I just, I just want to be clear what. And, and for the benefit of the rest of the board, what, what we've seen in the past with these records.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you about Zillow. That, that could be hit or miss, but it, but it also provides a little bit of light on what actually exists. But again, it, it's a small part of my analysis.
So, so looking at the tax record for this particular property. What's the square footage on the tax record for this particular property?
You know, I took that one, I have these things all. Tabulated here. So I put in, because we have a survey of the applicant's property.
Alright, so no, I'm just saying for, for comparing apples to apples and apples to oranges. The tax record for that property. Says that the square footage is one thousand eight hundred and forty six square feet.
Okay.
But the existing habitable floor area. On the plan here is two thousand sixty nine. Square feet.
Yeah, I, I didn't evaluate that one.
The property that we're talking about specifically. Is so far.
Well, we have to be able to rely on those, those tax records because this is how people are being taxed on their home. I mean, these are supposed to be reliable.
What I'm saying is to compare. This process where we're talking about architectural plans. It, it, on this specific property that are saying that it exists at two thousand sixty eight point eight square feet. And the tax record says that it. Exists at. Eighteen hundred forty six square feet. But you want us to compare all these other. Properties to this property based on just the tax record information.
Well, I think it's a fair starting point, and if what the board is saying is, look, in those instances where the board, this board has previously granted habitable floor area. Uh, or, or uh, floor area ratio variances and the memorial is by resolution. It's easy enough to find if that's what we need to do. If we need to dig to that level. We can certainly dig to that level if that's where we need to go to substantiate. These variations, but I, I'm going to, I'm going to wager that Mr. Fitcher's figure of eight out of twenty three is going to be accurate. So whether we get there through tax records. Which are official, which are not contested so far in this hearing, other than speculation, but which are official as far as the Borough Fairhaven is concerned. Or whether we get to resolutions issued by this board. I think we're going to wind up at the same place unless the board members disagree. If you disagree, we're happy to do the, the legwork and come back to you with it.
But I think. We, we have not. Considered. The floor area that's been listed on the tax records because it varies so widely. From the actual floor area as measured. By our ordinances and as measured on architectural plans. I'll, I'm just stating that.
Yeah, Mr. Chavetti, I just took a quick look at the tax records for um, the applicant's property. And the numbers that I used in my analysis, using that same number for the applicant's property. Uh, the square footage of the home is eighteen hundred forty six square feet. That comes from the property record card.
I don't, I don't understand.
Are you saying with the plans, the existing on the plans is incorrect?
No, I, I think you said a thousand something, one oh.
No, he said eighteen forty six.
I said that the tax record says it's eighteen forty six.
I misunderstood.
The plans that you provided say it's two thousand sixty nine.
But if we look at the building coverage, the house, the existing house is eighteen thirty five point three. So I think that. Puts those two numbers very close. So I'm assuming that the tax records are off of building coverage.
Can I? Already, the testimony was.
Reliable.
The testimony was that this should be considered as compatible with the neighborhood because of the following data. The board's reaction to that is that you've cherry picked the items outside of two hundred feet. And that the information that you've, that you've shared with us is historically unreliable. It's evident with regard to the property that we're talking about. It's further evident on your architect's plans. Because we have a disagreement as to whether or not the square footage is properly calculated because he's installed walls. So we didn't bring the issue up. We're, we're reacting to the way that it's been presented to us because it's being presented as a fait accompli. So we can move on to something else. But I, I just want to, I just want to make clear that we're not making an issue of this. We recognize that those discrepancies exist. We also recognize that we've granted variances. Um, I, I would argue to you, Mr. Victor, that one of the problems with the argument is. That it's a reason not to grant this variance. Because each time a variance is granted, you have an opportunity to walk in and say it's nine out of twenty three. And the truth of the matter is that that actually hinders the purpose of zoning. Which is to constrain these structures in a way that is consistent with what council dictates. And what's missing. Is some reason, some functional necessity associated with developing and redeveloping this home in a way to preserve it. Which necessitates it exceeding the cap. The problem that we had last time and we still have. Is that with a relatively blank slate upstairs. You're just over. And so that is, I think, where this board has found a basis for relief. In working with an existing structure. And so I would, I would ask you to present anything that you have. In helping us understand where the balance of accepting the overage. Can be weighed against preserving this structure because you're correct that both the master plan and this board. Seeks to do that when it's appropriate.
So. Yeah, a lo- a lot of things about what you just said, but you know, you're presenting to me one thought. What I did for you is I considered the proofs that are required for this. I provided positive criteria and negative criteria, which as far as I'm concerned is pretty compelling. There's a lot of good that can be done. And there's a lot of protection of bad to prevent that from happening. In totality, I think. Wh- when you consider that positive and negative criteria, the positives outweigh the negatives. I mean, honestly, I, I think the alternative here is knocking down the house, which I know you don't want to happen. And if it was knocked down and built new at, at three thousand two hundred twenty square feet, is that better than what we're proposing? I don't think so. I don't think we're doing any damage to the neighborhood. The, the, we're not going to stick out as a large house. Your master plan is all about avoiding McMansions, but you know, it goes back to the.
Sort of like a de minimis argument then, Mr. Victor?
I'm sorry?
Is it a de, a de minimis argument? That the, the amount by which it exceeds the cap?
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it's de minimis. I'm suggesting that it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay, so. Can we discuss the question about the measurement? Of the habitable floor area so we all agree what we're dealing with? Because your current submission puts it at thirty five forty one point eight. And I guess um, Ms. Gable. Her opinion is that. It's more than that?
So yeah, there's a couple of things. So habitable floor area in your ordinance. Uh, it's defined as a sum of gross horizontal area of all stories and half stories of a building as measured from the exterior face of exterior building walls. Or from the center line uh, of wall separating two buildings. In residential buildings, garages, attics and cellars shall not be calculated as habitable floor area. Alright, so there's not much there except for the attic comment. Right? So uh, if I recall correctly, the attic, it's an attic when it doesn't have that stairway going to it. So there, there is no access to the attic. That's number one. Number two is.
If there no access to.
That, well, let, let's finish the thought and then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll start all up. So number two is the definition of habitable room, and that's defined. As any room within a building used for the purpose of sleeping, sleeping, eating. Preparation of food, offices, selling of merchandise, public gatherings or assembly lobbies. All habitable rooms within a dwelling unit shall have natural light, ventilation and heat. Within a dwelling, garages, porches, cellars and utility rooms are not considered to be habitable rooms. So it seems pretty clear to me by that definition, it's not a habitable room. That's, that's space that's closed off and not finished. Is not a habitable room and therefore would not be included in the habitable floor area calculation.
But is there a tension between the definition of habitable room and habitable floor area? Measurement then?
Well, there's no measurement of habitable room. They're just defining what's habitable, which to me leads into the habitable floor area. So they kind of go hand in hand.
But that contradicts what Fairhaven's ordinance requires in terms of measuring the habitable floor area? Is that where the problem is? I'm just trying to understand where the conflict is.
I don't think there is a.
It's dead space.
I think that dead space is not included in the floor area calculation.
Cause there's no access to it?
There's no access to it. It doesn't have. Right? It's not used for sleeping, eating, preparing food. It's not finished. It's not a habitable room. I'm sure by building code definition, it's not going to be habitable either, but that's where the architect way in on.
And Elena, is your, is your. Position that it has to be greater than thirty five forty one point eight under our ordinance?
So it's my understanding that the habitable floor area is calculated from exterior wall to exterior wall. Along all sides of the building.
And that would be regardless, I'm sorry, that would be regardless of whether it.
Right, because you would take into account that wall space.
Room.
Mm-hmm, and when you calculate it based upon exterior wall to exterior wall, you, you get. You know, the, the wall that. No one's living in a wall unless you're really small or something. I don't even know. So. When you do, you know. When you have dead space between the wall, it should still be calculated. Because it's. The reason this habitable floor area standard was even kind of developed was to help control the massing of homes. That's why Fairhaven has this standard and they established a cap and they established a ratio to kind of. Try to stop, you know, those mega McMansions from popping up left and right. Um, so I. I think that based upon the ordinance of habitable floor area. Um, that, you know, it, it should be that even though it's dead space, it's not. Habitable, and that's not a habitable room. It's still could be. It's still there.
So the logic. So we, we fully understand this tension and I don't think we should relitigate it here tonight. I think that we know that.
I didn't understand it, Todd.
Uh, Pat, we can talk about it offline for as long as you want. It is, it is, it is there. Uh, but the logical extension of the argument that's being projected by Mr. Picture is that. You could create a wall in the middle of a floor. And create unlimited unregulated space provided that you don't exceed lot coverage, building coverage or any of the setbacks. And so the zoning board has always simplified all of this. Um, and has held on to if the floor is accessible by a fixed staircase, it is exterior wall to exterior wall. I disagree. That there isn't a conflict. I think that when you read it all together, there's only one way to look at it. But it is certainly true, as I mentioned during the last meeting with this applicant. That there is construction of attic spaces which are separated from the main living space on the second floor, which are not calculated. Nobody would argue otherwise. But the, the spaces that have been created in this redesign i- is not consistent with how this board has interpreted square footage. Anybody disagree with what I just said on this board?
So I think you're saying it's greater than thirty five forty one point eight under our ordinance. Is that what you're saying?
So uh, there's no question in my mind that the true calculation of the size of this house is sill plate to sill plate, exterior wall to exterior wall on the second floor. I, I, I further remind you that two months ago, I noted that this applicant was being hindered. By the fact that they had designed the house in such a way that they were counting all this square footage. And that the appearance of the house from the exterior would not be substantially different than a thirty two twenty with a five hundred square foot. Uh, dead space, uncounted attic above a garage.
And was there an argument two months ago as to why? The fixed staircase. Then was there an argument two months ago as to why the fixed staircase above the second floor did not create even more habitable floor area?
They took it out, I think. You, you mean to the attic?
Yeah.
I, I, there is, there is no staircase to the attic.
That's removed.
Look, e- everybody, at the end of the day, th- there, there's issues about interpretation and there's, there's, there's funkiness to the ordinances and there's been an effort for a very long time to clean them up. They are what they are. The board should look at the house for what it is. Calculated as 35, 38, 3850, whatever the number is, it's the exterior appearance of the house. As we have always done, look at it that way. If there's a resolution favor.
I'm sorry, I'm confused here because I'm looking at plans. Date revised June 22nd, 2021, is that what we're looking at here?
Yes.
Okay. And on the second floor plan, is there not the word up? And a curved line showing going up, fixed set of stairs above the staircase there to somewhere above the second floor?
So I believe the testimony last month, uh, there, there's that height limit, is it seven foot something? Um, going to the definition right now.
You are so good, you are so good. Oh my gosh.
Yeah, seven feet, so testimony by the, by the architect last month was that.
Habit will attic, it's not the definition of habitable floor area.
So I discussed this, yeah, I discussed this with Ms. Gable last month and she'll correct me if I'm misremembering this, but we went through that and agreed that, that it's not a habitable attic and it's not part of habitable floor area.
Right, so there's a definition for habitable attic. Um, and one of the requirements is that the floor to ceiling height is a minimum of seven feet.
That's a definition of habitable attic. It's not a definition of habitable floor area.
Right, but otherwise.
It's conflating two different definitions. So a fixed staircase serves something above the second floor here that has walls at either end of it that are exterior walls.
Yeah, look, I, I, I know what I was saying, the, the other, the other piece of it.
And not, not for nothing, if, if it's not habitable space and it's being used for storage and it could be served by a pull down stair someplace instead of a fixed stair, you could save 60 to 80 square feet of all that hallway that wraps around the staircase to go to that up staircase there that you could take off of something here, I'm sure, because you, you'd have 60 to 80 additional square feet to work with.
But that's.
I agree with that, Al, but is it really gonna change, is that, we're literally always not gonna change the front facade of the building anyway, so that's my.
First part of the argument is that we've, we've historically treated a fixed staircase to something above the second floor is habitable floor area.
I agree.
By definition, by which we calculate habitable floor area, not habitable attic, which is a conflation of the habitable attic definition and the habitable floor area definition.
So the habitable attic definition actually provides a benefit because what it does is it reduces by two thirds what the total square footage is of the floor plate. And so I actually completely agree with Al. I think we are conflating it and th- there's no, no question that this board has consistently interpreted a fixed staircase to a third story as creation of habitable square footage. And I think that that's the right interpretation, I think it's the only clean interpretation. Otherwise, we get caught up in all these games the way we have done for the last half hour. But I stand corrected, I rushed right through to say that that stairway was removed. It is relevant, um, that the staircase is there and that it is additional square footage. And whether it's, you know, we, we just finished an application where the entire basement was all living space and the ceiling height was seven feet. We call it what it is, but it's certainly usable space. But, but I, I thought we came to the conclusion at the last meeting that although the staircase was there, the space was out, the space was not considered. I don't remember that conclusion. I, I, I'm suggesting that it be considered by the board because I, I think that what, what we're faced with here is, is a C2 variance that basically argues this is a better zoning alternative than the limits as they are because we're working around an existing structure. And what the board has to assess is the efforts that have been made to constrain this house to a conforming size. And Al points out 80 square feet that have been set out to accommodate a fixed staircase to a third story, usable or not. It's not being, uh, maximized. And certainly you could argue that if it wasn't there, you have 80, 80 square feet to play with. I think all of that's relevant. I, I, I don't think we're ever going to agree as to what the square footage numbers are, although Mr. Lawrence certifies the plans based on the ordinances.
Yeah, but after all that, I don't know what the square footage is. Thank you.
I'll ask the question again, though, guys, and maybe I'm missing the point. But if you eliminate, Al and I agree with you and that's a fantastic catch on your behalf. But if you eliminate that hallway, does it change the front facade of the house? That second, that if I'm looking at the west elevation, I don't think it does because you're not gonna automatically eliminate that little corner, so.
So there's been.
Function of the space that you have in the center portion of the house. And I don't know if it saves you having to go out over the uh, garage as much as you do. And I wonder if that's a way to, to, to bring any of it back in, but that's, like I said.
What you're really bringing to the surface is the difference between the math and how we calculate it and what we're really trying to get, right? Because all of these ordinances are intended to constrain the size of the home. You know, people seem to think that we care how many bedrooms or bathrooms or whatever are in the house, we don't. What we care is that they fit in and that they're not too big. And all of these ordinances, every single one of them, is intended to contain the size of the structure. So if we know that and we look at all of this, the question is all these spaces that are arguably not counted, what's the relevance? So at the end of the day, does it change the front facade? No, but what we're looking at is an effort to make this work by way of numbers and you haven't really seen any change to change the bulk of the house.
So, um, I, before, uh, maybe Mr. Lawrence gets into that, I, I, a number of times throughout this hearing, there's been questions and I, I don't think we're, I, or I should say it the other way, I think we all kind of agree here, but just in case there's any confusion. The home that's proposed is compliant and then some for setback height, floor area ratio, building coverage. So the, the bulk, so to speak, of the home as viewed from the public really isn't at issue, it's the habitable floor area. So when, when we talk about, does it change the elevation of the home? I'm not sure that's what you're getting at, but I wanted to throw that out there just for, for clarity.
But the point of the habitable floor area and the way that it constrains the, the, the bulk is that you're you, so you're compliant on the setbacks and you're compliant on the height. You could build, let's say arbitrary number, a 4,000 square foot home within setbacks. And, and that's great, but you've got a cap of 2,000 square feet. What, what is being offered to us here is I'm gonna build a wall down the middle of this 4,000 square foot structure. Say I'm not having access to 2,000 square feet of it. So it's only a 2,000 square foot habitable floor. That's exactly what's going on over that garage.
No, that's unfair, that, that's unfair, it really is.
That's exactly what's going on with those walls.
Right, that, that's unfair. If we have a 4,000 square foot box and we chop it in half, that's blatant disregard, that's not what we've done. We have attic space with a roof over it that's being closed off, that, that's not a fair comparison.
But, well, well, hold on, Mr. Picture, is there any, is there any limit to the extension of your logic? Because I, I, look, I, this is not personal, but I, I, I don't see a limit to the logic which says if we can't access it, it doesn't count.
Well, I can tell you this, uh, you know, I do, I, I've done thousands of hearings in my career, I'm all over the state. I've seen all matters of ordinances. Um, you, you got, and this is not a compliment or a complaint, it's just a, a statement of fact. Your ordinance is extraordinary in the lengths it goes to restrict the size of a home. Floor area ratio on a single family home, you, you're one of the only ones that, that does it. You got building coverage, floor area ratio, habitable floor area, you got setbacks, you got building height. And we're counting areas that could never be used, you know, an attic that's defined as not habitable and I mean, we're going to great lengths.
But is it, but Mr. Fisher, is it for the board to, to ignore the ordinance? Those are arguments, if, if somebody wants to change the ordinance, those arguments should be made to the governing body. It's not for the board to say, we don't like them and ignore them. By the way, the floor ratio ordinances were upheld by the New Jersey Supreme Court. The Rumsfeld Fairhaven case, I'm sure you're well aware of it. We take the, we take the ordinances as the governing body gives them to us.
No, you, you misunderstood my point, and I.
I apologize if I misunderstood.
No, no, that, that's okay, it's valid of you to bring it up because if that's what I meant, you, you would be very much in line to set me straight, but that wasn't my point. My point is, we've got a lot of things we're working with, with this existing home to bring it to what we're proposing. And we're, we're 99% of the way there, it's the habitable floor area that's the issue. But the bulk of the home is controlled by so many other things. Not the, not the least of which is the consistency with the other homes in the neighborhood. So I, I don't think that, um, you know, this is, it, it's, it's not like, um, you know, building coverage is allowed at 35% and we're asking for 60, I mean, it, that would, I wouldn't be here if that was the case. I thought that this application is very reasonable and it was compelling to present to you. Not saying you have to approve it, but I, I felt very good about it.
Paul, can you please pull up the proposed west elevation? Let's just look at this massing of this structure over the garage and let's see if it's really out of character with this house and this neighborhood. Just pull it up if you would, is sheet A4 of A4? Okay, so the left side, that's the room that's over the garage, right? That's what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody find that's excessive in terms of the mass? It's a, is it a 12 on 12, the pitch?
Yes.
Pretty traditional. It follows the footprint of the existing garage, right?
Correct.
So we just didn't invent this space, the space is there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes I think we lose track of everything as we, as we chase these theories, these, these lovely zoning theories. I, I, I think as we chase these zoning theories down the rabbit hole, we lose sight of what's it gonna look like? This is what it's gonna look like. Five neighbors came out at the last hearing.
Footprint of the existing garage? Look at.
Five neighbors came out at the last hearing and testified they love this design. Did the board hear that? Did the board hear how the impact is on the neighborhood? Those are the types of things that you have to reconcile as well as these standards.
Yeah, we have to reconcile it with the ordinances that were given. And we have to reconcile it fairly and consistently with the way that we've reconciled it with those ordinances in the past.
Before you even get to the dead space, we're 10% over the cap, right? I mean, that's just a really easy number to look at. And, and I think, you know, we can look at comparables, but my, my issue with that is it, it was presented as kind of a binary issue, right? Like neighboring houses are either over or they're not. I mean, we're, we're more than 10% over if you, if you start to count the dead space and then we get into all the other issues with the attic and so on. Um, so I, I, I do think, you know, we have to have some kind of justification for going over that. And, yeah, I'm kind of struggling with that.
So I, I want to clarify one point in defense of the ordinances. That, that, the problem with our ordinances is that they rely on floor, floor ratio. They rely on habitable square footage. And the truth is that if you ignore those numbers, if you don't calculate them consistently, the setbacks and the lot coverage are inadequate. So I promise you, when you all go home tonight and you want to do some sketches, you'd be able to design a 10,000 square foot house if you ignored floor ratio on this lot. That was not at all the intent. The intent was that they all work in harmony to contain the size of the house. The problem with the testimony and then what we've gotten caught up on is it's being advanced that some of these things either aren't important enough to be concerned about or in comparison to other things aren't any worse. So I think we've gotten caught up in how it's being presented. We talked about it last month. The truth is that what's being proposed is not substantially different from many houses that are being built around town without variances. That's true. That doesn't help the board reconcile with the variance that needs to be justified on a C2 basis, which shows some reason to actually go over. It is what it is, we struggle with it all the time. And so we prefer to see the house renovated for sure. But, but we're not seeing, I'm, I'm not seeing where there is something specifically that we're working around. I, I, I really think that 230 square feet coming off the top, had it come off in a way that resulted in the house were being reduced in size, would have set the right tone for the discussion this evening. If there was an explanation of why it was 380 over based on the footprint and working with those front rooms on the first floor and the utility of those rooms, I think there's an argument to be advanced. But instead, we got caught up in the fact that we, that we built some walls and the structure didn't change. You know, that, that, that just is what it is. And Mr. Fixer's testimony with regard to the other homes, you know, created a particular picture that, you know, some of us felt the need to clarify in terms of the other homes. And, and Mr. Lawrence is unable to confirm what the actual square footage is because he's testified that he put the walls in based on what I said two, two months ago. If I understood him correctly.
You, you did, and also this entire discussion leaves me in a quandary as to how to calculate because I don't think we settled the attic issue. That came up and, and yet, I don't, I didn't hear it resolved. So it's, it's all of us are wrestling here.
There are answers to these questions and at the end of the day, there needs to be sort of a final resolution based on how you read them together. And when there are positional, um, statements and positions that are advanced as to how it needs to be looked at, we're never gonna agree. Because Mr. Fixer's argument is that it's measured as small as it can be measured based on the logic of his arguments and I believe that he believes them. And the board has historically reviewed them in a way that makes sense in total. And the zoning officer reviews them the way that he reviews them. And Mr. Lawrence, you review them differently than other architects, so.
Uh, as an aside, I was speaking with another architect and he told me after the meeting last time that he did exactly what you said. He presented a set of plans that were denied by the zoning department and he built a wall to the access over the garage and they were approved. And it was built with not going in front of the board. So it's not, um, it's not just made up, it's, it's approved by the town.
I've been doing this a long time, I know what you said is true, I don't even know which one that is, but it probably could be many. Mr. Akins, I said last time, this is a, a situation where the applicant is showing us what they're doing and that it is unfortunate that the square footage is calculated as what it is. We've gotten to where we've gotten to and, you know, let's press ahead. So at this time, based on the comments, we're gonna need to request that matter be carried. I don't think we're anywhere near reconciling the board's position with the applicant's position.
Do, do we know what the real number is? What number we are, is, is the, that's the whole crux of the argument, Mr. Akins, and I appreciate that. I have no idea what the real number we're asking for is.
Well, if you add, if you add back one 63.4 to three, to 3541.8, you're 3705.2, if my math.
Pretty much where we were last month.
The reduction on the first floor was 20 or 30 square. Right, right. But, but I need to speak with my client outs- outside of the presence of, of the board and understand that what the board is saying is the dead space is gonna count uh, based upon the board's application of the ordinance. And the, the board a- and, and that's, that's, doesn't seem like that's gonna, you know, gonna, you know, ca- carry the day. And so then we've got to talk about, you know, redesigning the, the elevation of the house, which, you know, when, when I, when I show, when I invited everyone to see it moments ago, I didn't hear any gasping or anyone saying, that's terrible. It looks very consistent with a typical house of that character and quality. That's just my opinion, but. But, but, but Mr. Akins, you, you haven't asked. But Mr. Akins, you haven't asked for a vote yet. What instead, we're arguing about some of the information that's been presented because I think some board members think that it's not fair, the way that it's being presented. And I would never ask for a vote where issues such as square footage are not resolved. That's not fair to the board and it's not fair to the applicant. And so that needs to be resolved, I agree a hundred percent. We haven't agreed on much this evening, but we'll agree on that.
For the record, Mr. Akins, and I agree with Mr. Leader and I agreed with him last month. This looks so much like every other house that we look at, I agree with them, but lots of the, we know who the builders are that build them and build that over the stairs. The difference here is that we see the bedroom in that, all of those were fixed staircase from the garage. That's walled off and it's storage area. And who knows if there's gonna be a bedroom there later? And the problem here is it's being presented as part of the plan. And by that bedroom over the garage being presented as part of the plan, all of a sudden raises gaps. I agree with you a thousand percent, it's probably not gonna change at all whether that's a bedroom or not a bedroom. But it is what it is and that's why it's coming up. Hell, if you went to say this is gonna be a three bedroom house and that's gonna be storage and walled off from the side of the house with a fixed stair out of the garage or a pull down, doesn't matter. Now you take out, you know, four hundred square feet right there.
It's not gonna be a three bedroom house.
Understood, but this is the problem we're running into.
Understood, right.
And I don't think it's gonna differ one bit from the facade from the street unless you make a significant change to the roof line of the garage.
I know exactly what I'd argue, I know exactly how I'd approach it. But I think that the reactions tonight were honest and fair. I think our interpretation of the square footage at the zoning board level has been consistent. If you're dealing with the zoning officer, you can deal with him independently. And if he wants to exclude spaces because there's a wall, then he can do that, we haven't done that. So this is what it is, we called it out like it was. The changes that have been made tonight and the presentation that it's two hundred and thirty square feet smaller is something we've discussed. The presentation that it's consistent with, you know, the neighborhood feel or whatever, we've talked about that. And what you do with the third floor, we can debate that as well. But whether or not we think it's part of the square footage or not. So, Mr. Akins, you'd like to carry?
Yes, I'm gonna need at least a month to get the benefit of revised plans and discussions with the, you know, with the clients.
Okay, stipulation of time to act?
Yes, well, so consent.
I'll make the motion, carry.
Do we have a date, Mr. Chairman?
I think it's the ninth of August.
Sandy, what's the current calendar for August?
It's August fifth. And we have one application on the agenda for that night.
I'm away on August fifth.
The next meeting is September ninth.
Okay, motion to carry to September ninth.
Second.
Ms. Chairman, sorry to interrupt, do we anticipate we'll be back live on September nine? Because we do, we may want to make that announcement as part of the motion, otherwise Mr. Akins will likely have to renotice.
You know, all of that is in flux, I certainly don't want to create a need to renotice where there isn't one. We've got good notice for tonight's meeting, can't we just put on the record that to the extent that September meeting is live, that this will be carried in whatever format we have in September?
And we'll just advise interested parties, when the motion is made, to check with the Borough Calendar to ascertain whether it's live or Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Okay, you okay with that, Mr. Akins?
Okay with that.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I need a second to roll call.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Leader?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I understand the matter is carried by the board to its September nine, two thousand twenty-one meeting without the necessity of renotice. We have a stipulation from Mr. Akins extending time which the board has to act. And we are advising interested parties that there is the possibility that we may be live or in turn, we may still be proceeding remotely by Zoom. And any interested parties should check with the Borough, you can check on the website well in advance or you can call Borough Hall as far as Board Secretary, just to confirm whether we're gonna be live or Zoom. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Akins?
It certainly is, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, straight everybody. Okay, we have one more matter on the agenda, it is ten eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I understand you want to at least try to, we would like to try to get started. I have a bit of a personal issue, I gotta hop on a call with my Hong Kong office in about twenty-five minutes. And I don't think that I'll be able to hear this tonight.
So I'm gonna recuse myself from the application, so I'm not gonna involve myself in this discussion, so.
Okay. As much as I would like to start an application, just to get something on there, I don't think I'll be able to do it. So I would suggest that we move Katie to the August fifth meeting and have it be first on the agenda then.
Why don't we bring up Mr. Nuchesny insofar as Mr. Leader's accusing himself and Mr. Chesney has taken over as our vice chair? Why don't we bring up counsel for Mr. Katie? Do we have Mr. Herbert?
Sandy, why don't you move me to the gallery at the chair?
While we're bringing up Mr. Herbert, the other in line with Mr. Nuchesny's comments, one of the downsides, even if you're gonna start, if you're only gonna get ten or fifteen minutes into it, then you have the issue of, you know, who's gonna be available next time, who's not gonna be available, you know, those kinds of issues as well. But my experience is you tend to go over the ten or fifteen minutes you start anyway. Do we have Mr. Herbert, there is, Mr. Herbert, we'll let you put your appearance on the record on the Katie matter.
Good evening, board members, my name is Michael Herbert, I'm with the law firm of Parker McKay and I represent the Kates with regard to their application tonight.
And Mr. Nuchesny, if I may, before we address the issue of how we're gonna proceed or if we're gonna proceed, let me just indicate for the record that I reviewed the notice materials, they appear to be in order. Perhaps we can check Sandy or if we still have Joe. If there's any interested parties that have any issues, questions or problems regarding the notice materials, please raise your hand or signify, we'll address that, not the merits of the case, any problem with the notice? Any response from anyone, Sandy? No response?
No response.
All right, terrific, so the record will reflect the board's jurisdiction here and consider the matter. Mr. Herbert, you heard, and sorry to keep you hanging around all evening here, it's just sometimes the way it works out. And it is now ten fifteen, so you heard it's the board's intention to carry the matter. What was that date? Mr. Nuchesny, is that August five?
Fifth of August, I believe, is that right, Sandy?
That's correct.
Are you available, Mr. Herbert, you and your professionals, August five, first Thursday?
I have a hearing that night in Powell and my professionals are both live elsewhere.
Okay.
I know we had a second meeting in July, is that possible at all?
Is the July fifteen meeting still available? Mr. Chesney or Sandy?
I believe it is.
Is there anything on that date, Sandy?
I don't believe there's anything scheduled for that date, no.
Okay, from the board members, do we have any idea? We won't have an issue with quorum, will we? Anybody gonna be away on July fifteen? Everybody's.
Mr. Lauffer's raising.
Mr. Lauffer's raising his finger, you're away, Mr. Lauffer, Dr. Lauffer, I'm sorry.
How are you?
I might be, but I might be available, if it's on Zoom, I'm probably gonna be available.
As of now, it remains on Zoom.
Mr. Leader, we would have seven then.
Okay, all right, so as I understand, Mr. Herbert, you'd prefer the July fifteen date?
I would, Mr. Irene.
Okay, Mr. Nuchesny?
Yeah, I'm good for fifteenth.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion then to carry the Katie matter to the fifteenth meeting?
To July fifteen, without the necessity of renotice. We're gonna get a stipulation from Mr. Herbert extending time which the board has to act. So is that the motion?
That is the motion, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call?
Yep. Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
You're muted, Marty.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Is that it? So, Mr. Herbert, we just want to ask you to stipulate for the record, we have an extension of time which the board has to act through, give us the first meeting in August, just in case there's some problem in July, August five?
Mr. Irene, on behalf of the applicant, I stipulate an extension of time to August five.
So, thank you so much, so let's just announce for the record that the Katie matter, one thirty-seven Grange Avenue, is being carried by the board to July fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one, without the necessity of renotice. And interested parties mark your calendar accordingly, there'll be no further notice and the July fifteen meeting will be proceeding remotely via Zoom. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Herbert?
It is, you know, I apologize, I'm looking at my calendar here. That's gonna be a tough, that will be a tough meeting for me. I have a county commissioner meeting at six, so I'm trying to figure that out. Is there a second meeting in August as well?
I believe we had, no, we did not schedule one in August, did we?
No, we have a special meeting on August nineteenth.
Oh, we do? By special meeting, you mean we calendared a second meeting for that month?
Correct.
Okay, so that.
You know what, my professionals are available, Miska Phone is available on the nineteenth of August. I am as well, it's a much better night for us. So if it's okay with everyone, that would be preferable and I will still stipulate extending the time to August twentieth.
Mr. Chesney, do we wanna?
So just so I'm clear, are we hearing on the fifteenth of July or not? Okay, so we're now going to the second meeting in August, which is nineteen, is that correct, Mr. Herbert?
I appreciate the adjustment, I really do.
Mr. Herbert, you mentioned August twentieth, is it the nineteenth or the twentieth?
Sandy, what's the correct date?
I have the date listed as the nineteenth of August.
It's August nineteen, I think Mr. Herbert was just stipulating if we go beyond midnight.
I see.
Got it, thank you.
Hopefully we won't be doing, Mr. Herbert.
I certainly hope not, Mr. Irene and I have been doing this for over thirty years, so we both know that sometimes you do go past midnight, that's why I go the extra day.
Okay, very good, so let's, the motion then will be to table the Katie matter until the August nineteenth special meeting.
Without the necessity of renotice?
Before we do that, let me just take a poll of the board, what are we looking like for quorum? I see Mr. Cancela shaking his head.
I will be in Maine, I could possibly, if needed, zoom in if we're doing it that way, but I'm not sure about internet connection up there.
Sure, anybody else have a conflict? Okay, that's good, anybody else have a conflict with the nineteen? Okay, now at least just with seven for the nineteenth, then if Mr. Cancela can't make it, all right, we're good, August nineteenth then. Motion as made, without the necessity of notice.
Thank you so much, board members, I really appreciate it.
Can we get a second on that, please?
Second.
Ms. Quigley, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
And that's it.
So, any interested parties, the Katie matter is being carried to August nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, without the necessity of renotice. Now, we're just gonna make this announcement, there is a possibility that that meeting may be live and in person at Borough Hall. So we are announcing that any interested party should check in advance of the August nineteen meeting, go onto the website. You can also contact Sandy at Borough Hall to confirm whether we're going to be proceeding remotely via Zoom, otherwise live and in person. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Herbert?
It is, Mr. Irene, and again, I appreciate the adjustment.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you.
Do you want to move on to administrative matters?
I do, thank you, Mr. Irene.
Is Mr. Leader gonna rejoin the board?
He said he got knocked off and he asked if he should log in. Hang on one second. Administrative items, I will start with, Mr. Leader may be rejoining, I'm not sure yet. I just texted him. First item on the administrative, we have the minutes from the June third meeting, I have reviewed the minutes and found no changes to be suggested, everybody okay with the June third meeting? Then I'll make a motion to approve the June third minutes as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Secondly, we have the Shaw Resolution, fifteen button would drive. I have reviewed the resolution and everything looks good, I will make a motion to approve the Shaw Resolution as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Nuchesny, before the board concludes, do we want to take up the issue of if and when we're going to return to live and in-person meetings?
Yeah, I think we should discuss it, Mr. Chairman, the chairman is trying to log back in, but he's having some difficulty, I think. I would like to discuss this, I understand the council had their first live meeting, the last meeting was live in council chambers with a simulcast on Facebook Live. I have about five or six minutes to talk. Have we, is there anybody who has a feeling very strongly either way, whether we should be live in person? I mean, as I understand it, and thank you, Mr. Irene, for educating me, professionals and applicants would prefer to be live rather than on Zoom. I know it's convenient for all of us, it's very convenient to be able to see the exhibits on the screen rather than swiped in the room, but.
Do you know if they're going to keep posting the exhibits online for people's review?
I don't, I would hope they would, I think that's an excellent thing.
Well, I think.
Sandy, do you have any idea on that?
I mean, I don't know the rules around it, I don't think it would be a problem to continue to do it, it actually makes it easier in a lot of ways from a board office perspective, sure.
Very much so. Hell, I might just bring a laptop to the meeting and use that rather than paper plans. Anybody have any thoughts or questions or concerns about going back to a live meeting? No? Good. I mean, I think, Mr. Irene, I think we should endeavor to go down that road, especially in consideration that I think the applicants and/or professionals prefer it that way.
Well, now that the governing body has gone back live, that, you know, most of the boards that I'm affiliated with, they take their lead from the governing body. When the governing bodies have returned, they've returned. But again, I'm not advocating the board should do one thing or another, I'm just raising the issue because I know at the last meeting, we discussed that the governing body was going back live.
Right, I mean, I personally would say that we should plan on the August fifth meeting to be a live meeting considering that we're not gonna be using the July fifteenth number now anyway. And I think we should plan on that, and if we have anything difference between now and, you know, in the next couple of weeks. Sandy, who do we have on August the fifth?
August the fifth, we have Burke.
Okay, now, Mr. Irene, would there be a notice issue with Burke?
Well, what we would do, Ms. Chairman, that's what, last time around, we were talking about considering it tonight and targeting the first meeting in August presumably, because it would give us essentially a month where Sandy and I would get an old Public Meetings Act notice indicating that from whatever meeting forward for the rest of the year, we're back live, barring any subsequent change and any subsequent public meetings act notice. And we'd be advising applicants to notice for live and in-person hearings.
Now, Burke is noticed already though, have they not?
They have not.
They, well, I don't want to say they shouldn't have, but most people don't notice thirty days in advance of the hearing day.
Okay, so therefore, I think, and I think we should make it known to Mr. Burke that we will be planning on a live meeting for August the fifth.
So, do we want to take a motion to return to live in-person meetings for August five, two thousand twenty-one?
Sure. I will make a motion that we will be returning to live meetings as of August fifth, two thousand twenty-one. I don't know if we're going to be, if we have the technical ability to simulcast like the council did, but because I'm sure we could. Because I'm sure we could break Facebook with the amount of people that want to watch us, but, um, I think it probably would be live only.
Well, and and, Mr. Chairman, that's something I would suggest that 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 can be a conversation with the governing body. There are some towns where they broadcast. But it would not be a hybrid where some people are live and in person and other people. That creates a bunch of other issues. Right, so it would, it would be live, and if at some point the governing body wants to simply broadcast one way out. That's fine. But that would be up to the governing body. So, okay, so the motion is to go back live in person, August 5, 2021, and every meeting thereafter until further notice?
Yeah, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Cancela?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
We got everybody?
Yeah, can I ask a procedural question about?
Did Mr. Cancela make the mo- the second?
Did I screw it up? I'm sorry.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we have a first for Mr. Nachesny. We're gonna ask somebody who's not an alternate, because I got a full board to make a motion.
Sorry.
Second by Ms. Quigley. That's okay.
And do we need to redo the roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
So, before we leave that issue, and I know you've got to run, Mrs. Chesney, but Sandy, you and I will work on a public meetings act notice if you remind me, please.
Right.
And, uh, you're going to tell the Burks and everybody else going forward that they're going to be to go back to the old form of notice, so we'll have to find it. Eliminate the ones about Zoom. And the other question I have, uh, Mr. Nachesny is, right now, is, do I understand that we do not have anything on for July 15?
My understanding, yes.
We do not.
I as, I assume we're going to take a motion to cancel that meeting?
Um, yeah, I suppose. I just didn't, they were only ad hoc anyway, but I guess we'll make a motion to cancel the 15th of Ju- of July meeting then.
Yeah, because I believe those meetings were noticed in our Public Meetings Act notice, so if we're not going to have a a meeting, we should cancel.
Okay, I will make a motion to cancel the 15th of July meeting.
Second. Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ledman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Chairman?
That's, that's all I have. I know I would like to open for public comment, just to be procedural. I think I can squeeze it in. If anybody, members of the public have any statements or concerns or would like to make any comments. Uh, now's your time to please raise your hand using the raise hand feature.
And a quick point while we're waiting, are we going to get paper copies of materials now that we're going to be in person?
Well, we would like informally to try to keep them getting posted, Sandy.
Yeah.
Yeah, agrees.
So would it be sufficient to just post the information versus providing packets?
Uh, it's up to what the board members want, if they, if they want paper.
I think if everybody could email, I think if anybody could email, um, Sandy at the time being, explaining what what your preference to be. I mean, just, I I wasn't kidding. I may sh- I may just use a laptop. It's much easier to see on the screen for me than it is to open up the paper copies. So, but be, feel free to, you know, let her know your preference for everything. Okay, I don't see anybody's hand raised, so I will, uh, anybody have anything else, guys? Thank you, Rich, for, uh, hanging out with us and and for your, for your information prior. It was very good. I will make a motion to adjourn then.
All right.
Any favor?
All in favor? Looking forward to seeing everyone.
Yes.
Looking forward to seeing everyone on August 5.
Guys, have a good night.
I recommend everybody. Take care.
Thank you. Thanks again, Rich.
Thanks, Sandy. Good night.